Gentlemen, we welcome you to Pocatello City Council meeting on this wonderful Valentine's Day. Mayor Blatt is in a little responsibility right now and will be joining us shortly. But let's go ahead and begin with our roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Adamson?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Gina?
Here.
Laura?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Blatt?
Thank you very much. Let's turn to our item number one, which is Pocatello Development Authority update. So if the members of the Pocatello Development Authority will join us, begin with introductions, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Scott Smith. I am the chairman of the Pocatello Development Authority and with me on my left I have Chad Carr and he is the vice chair. And on my right, we have Melanie Giggly and she is our executive director. And we are pleased to be here to give you our annual report.
Thank you. We look forward to it. We know you've been busy and we know there's much yet to be done, so carry on, Scott.
Thank you. Dale?
Yes.
I understand you have a packet that goes with our report. And I am not going to read this to you, but I just want to point out that right now, the Pocatello Development Authority is effectively managing four urban renewal areas.
Yeah.
And I just want to take a minute and talk about what's occurred in each of those four during the last year. And I want to start by talking about the North Yellowstone Urban Renewal Area. It was created in 2004 and was amended in 2007. It was originally planned to close in 2028. It was a project that involves considerable bonded debt that was to be paid off using tax increment through a TIF district. It's been extremely successful. There's been a lot of economic development there and the tax increment's been very strong. And I'm here to report that we will be paying off those bonds this year before summer.
For the general public, what is the impact of those bonds being paid off? What does that do to our tax base, please, Scott?
While this is within the TIF district, the tax increment payments are directed to the Pocatello Development Authority and we use those to pay off the bonds. As soon as the bonds are paid off and the Pocatello Development Authority takes action to terminate the TIF district, then all of those tax dollars, instead of coming to our agency to pay the debt, those tax dollars will end up going to the county and the city.
And the debt being things like infrastructure?
That's how it was originally used, yes.
Okay. What's that projected to do to the tax base?
The increase, and Joyce might have more information, but the increase in valuation is going to be approaching 80 million.
80 million?
Yes.
From a time before, when the tax base on that would have been minuscule?
Yes. Yeah, there wasn't much there before.
Yeah.
So we have to say, that's why I'm starting with North Yellowstone. It's been wildly successful in my view. And I can't take too much credit for it. It was started before I was on the board, but it was, it's been a good thing and it, we anticipate that it'll be closed this year. The second urban renewal area I'd like to talk about is the Naval Portnitz Plant. This TIF district was created in 2006 with the intent of assisting with infrastructure improvements in that area to maintain the businesses that are there and to entice others to come to the area. There is no debt associated with that area. The tax increment is used as it comes in. It's allocated towards certain infrastructure improvements. I'll report that for last year, there have been, there is money in this account for this urban renewal area. It has not been used in 2018 because there is a pending federal lawsuit over ownership of the plant. So it's sort of, as far as we're concerned, it's sort of on hold. I understand there have been some decisions made by Judge Windmill in that case and they've been appealed and at this point, we're just kind of sitting on the sideline and waiting to see what happens. But as soon as ownership's resolved, then we will assist again with some improvements there. The third area is the Pocatello Airport. This urban renewal area was created in 2010. Again, this area does not have any debt. It's another district where tax increment, as it comes in, is used for infrastructure improvements. Honestly, it's been a little slow in 2018. We were hoping for some additional economic improvement there and some additional businesses. There were some that had looked, but none had come in in 2018. And so 2018 was a very quiet year out there. We're expecting more action this year.
Is there a balance there then also?
There is a balance.
Do you know what that is?
Current fund balance there is just under 499,000. There's some 608. So there's a couple of balanced numbers that are, we have revised in the updated plan. So just under 500,000.
And what we're seeing is that as businesses show some interest in that area, they're always interested in some assistance with infrastructure, whether it's the water streets, railroads, sometimes they talk about. And so that's what that money would be allocated for. The fourth area I'd like to talk about is the North Portnif Urban Renewal Area. This one has been a bit of a problem child from before I was on the board. This is the Hoku site. This was created in 2007 specifically to assist with the Hoku development, which failed and went into bankruptcy. Through that bankruptcy, the city took possession of the land, of the dirt, and transferred it to the Pocatello Development Authority. And our agency is paying the city for that. There still remains about $240,000 owing to the city. It's being paid according to the terms of the agreement between the PDA and the city. The PDA intends to sell the land. I can't recall, third quarter or fourth quarter last year, we issued an RFP to sell the property. Fourth quarter, Melanie tells me. And we have, we received one proposal and it was accepted by the PDA. And we are under contract to sell it to a group called SolarJize. And just to be really clear, what the PDA owns and what we are selling, it's the dirt. It's none of the infrastructure above the dirt. SolarJize already has claim to ownership for everything above the dirt and they just want the dirt to go along with it. We're happy to oblige. We expect that it will close this year. I'll say this year. It's under contract and we expect it to close this year. When it closes, we will fully pay off the city. And then it's possible that the PDA will consider options to close the district. But I can't say for sure if that'll happen or not, but it's likely that that'll be raised.
You know what that, that's going to add on the tax base?
The added market value right now is about 7.5 million. With that in account, that's, I don't know what will happen when land transfers, if that will have an effect on it. Not as big as North Yellowstone.
No. But it could have in the future if this new company is able to develop out there. It could be very good for the area. Interestingly enough, they have not come and asked us to assist financially with any other infrastructure or anything. They just are interested in referencing the ground. So those are the four areas that we have been managing in 2018.
Did you deal with the airport? Did I miss that?
Yes, we did. I'd also like to talk about our new plan, the new plan for the North Gate Urban Renewal Area. I am certain the city council knows a lot about that. In 2018, early last year, the city council directed the Pocatello Development Authority to prepare an urban renewal plan for the North Gate area. The PDA spent a considerable amount of time last year putting that plan together. In December 2018, the PDA by resolution approved the plan and provided it to the city council. So it's now in your hands for the city's review and approval. I understand that it went through planning and zoning last night, is what Melanie is reporting to me. And I'm not entirely clear of the other steps, but you guys have it.
One of the things that really concerns me, your study on the performance of the TIF district is only inside the TIF district, right?
Say that again.
Your study for the performance of the TIF district only takes into account whether they'll be able to pay for infrastructure within the TIF district.
Yes, because that's what's within the parameters of what we do as board.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions. If we have no tangential tie to the connector, can we be reimbursed for what we've invested? In other words, if there is no Pocatello continuity to that connector, can we be reimbursed?
I think that's a good question. It's my understanding that the answer is yes, but we're relying on the city council that we retain and the experts that put the reports together.
Okay, because I just can't see, that would almost imply that we could invest anywhere.
Melanie, is it okay if Melanie responds?
Well, the TIF boundaries actually do take in the, a portion of what will be the new interchange, including the land that was acquired and given to the state by the North Gate Development Group. And our TIF district does draw in a portion of that.
The connector itself?
Well, a portion of the interchange. And then also...
Because my understanding was Chubak jumped over the freeway and annexed in and we have no direct land contact with that connector now?
We still, it is still within our TIF district boundary and we have discussed with the Chubak City Council in a work session. And it's going to go to them for further action next week on an intergovernmental agreement and a transfer of powers for us to continue with our plans to, and it does touch, right now, some of the property owned by the development group remains abutting.
But nothing in the city limits, right? We haven't, we haven't annexed in anything yet that would be close to that.
I can't, it does, yes and no. Their, part of the connecting road does touch. It's not yet in the city limits, but it does touch where Pocatello city limits exist. But the TIF boundary does include the road, including a portion of the interchange. And we are talking, working with the city of Chubak to give us the ability to use, to work the TIF and to include that in the reimbursables.
Because I really think that's an important factor in this.
We are working through this. It's scheduled, like I said, for I think their formal action at their meeting on the 20th.
And another, you have not done, you've not elected, you've been requested, I understand, through the mayor, to consider whether you would do a study to see what the impact of that TIF district might be on the rest of Pocatello. But my understanding is that you see that beyond the scope of what the PDA is supposed to do.
Yes, that's correct.
So anything that happens there in terms of services will be directly on all other taxpayers because the increment will not be paying to the taxpayer base.
The base taxes will still flow to the city and county.
But that's only, that's just a very minimal amount of money.
Yeah.
It's the land value once we, once we put that in our TIF district, it's a land value at that time and all the increment is beyond that. So anything that is built will be invested and to be paid off in the TIF district through 2040 or 2041. And so if we have to put fire stations, police, plow roads, everything else Pocatello has to do for services will fall on the rest of Pocatello. Is that right?
In a sense. And part of what you're talking about is a result of the way that the TIF district statutes and laws are drafted. But I think there's also this intent and understanding that we don't look at just a piece of Pocatello when we're making that analysis. And we really need to look at the whole city. And in this particular case, we have situations where we have North Yellow, sorry, North Yellowstone that's closing, considerable additional tax base coming from that.
But that's an assumption that that can be absorbed into underwriting the cost of a TIF district, not necessarily doing our projects like with the Portnif River or sewer in some areas, having our pay plan implemented.
How the money and tax base is spent is up to, up to city council. It has nothing...
But I know that, but so there really is no return to the city on that, that we know of right now, other than the study that shows the TIF district can perform within a TIF district. We don't know what ancillary development will be created by it. There's been no study of that. We don't know if there's a negative impact to our existing businesses. We don't know what the factor is by, if it grows the way it's supposed to, what that should spill over into the city limits of Pocatello. You know, none of that is delineating. There's no data out there for us to look at.
I think as far as the PDA is concerned in dealing with this project, we've spent a year looking at it. We've hired independent outside experts to put together reports. We've hired expert legal who is involved, has a considerable experience with TIF districts. And everything we've seen and heard is that this TIF district, as the plan has been provided to the city council, is, should be successful and should be very beneficial to the city in the long run. And the board believes that. We wouldn't have approved it and given it to the city council. And at this point, you know, ultimately, it's in your hands and city council will need to consider it and decide what you'd like to do with it.
When I looked at it, it looked to me like the increment by the time the TIF district closes would provide about $4 million into our coffers by the time it's all built out, 2041, when it comes on our roll. But until that time, all we're getting is that slight little investment that's already there as a tax base. So I guess, I'm one of the ones that probably has more, I don't want to say skepticism, but reality check, because I don't want to, I hope it goes, but I also want to know that what we're investing is we can pay for as a city until the time we get our return. And you know, if we're having to put $4 million in it for a few years before we get the $4 million back, that puts us upside down unless we've got other entities building around it. But some of that's gone now because Chubak has jumped over and has that northern part of it. And so I don't know if residential will take us to where we need to be. You know, I mean, if it's just residential that grows around there, because that's pretty much what is on the board in terms of other areas.
I'm going to call on Joyce, if she will, to make some comments in response to this.
Roger, I don't think your concerns are any different than any other subdivision we've taken in. There are subdivisions going up all around the city that affect police and fire services and the need for additional services. This is simply one more.
But this could impact us at the level of needing a substation for police?
But we can make that decision at the time. There's nothing in this plan that delineates we have to put a fire station or a police station.
If we don't put a fire station in and it strings us out and we drop our fire rating considerably...
And we can make that decision at the time it occurs necessary.
But I don't think you make decisions based on where you are at that point. I think you've got to anticipate the decisions you may be making and how this could hamstring Pocatello because we've made a financial commitment to provide services for a city within a city for 20 years.
No different than any other subdivision.
Yes, it is. This isn't, no other subdivision is a city within a city. Most of the subdivisions are very tangential.
This is tangential. It hooks right into the north end, northeast end of Pocatello.
The subdivisions in Pocatello that we've taken and begin paying taxes usually right away. There's no other subdivision. This is a delay of 20 years.
So maybe we delay.
If we can have a comment from Joyce Strohschain, please.
Okay. Some of the factors that you have to keep in mind is, are other revenues that come in that are highly dependent upon population and growth, like your liquor tax, your revenue sharing tax, let's see. Well, that's, that's the revenue sharing. That's the revenue sharing. And highway user money, which helps with the streets and the roads. Once the growth comes in, as we start to grow, we may not see it in tax money, but we will see it in these other forms because we will now have a bigger share within the state and that means we'll get more dollars. That is a support to these, to the growth of this development and that would be available. The other thing is, I firmly believe growth has to pay for growth. The closing of the North Yellowstone TIF district is going to provide, as you heard, 83 to 87 million. That's huge. That is a lot of dollars that will be coming back into us on a regular basis without impacting our levy rate because it's already built in, okay? It already exists. We're just now going to receive the dollars instead of the Pocatello Development Authority. That is a way for facilitating growth, paying for growth. And I think my last estimate on that, I want to say it was close to a million, it would have that impact. And remember, when we close a TIF, if we do a tramway, which we plan to do on this one, it will hit our new construction and that is really good for us. And then we also have some other, other things that could be coming off the boats or coming on the boats, shall we say, coming off the county's boats. They're called 602NNs. They don't like them to be called tax abatement, but that's what they are in essence. Those will be completing themselves and coming in. So those are all ways and avenues for the city to facilitate whatever needs it may have until the development of this, this area. And remember, we're not going to need everything overnight. It has to grow first before we have need. And that, and that means we'll start receiving some of these revenues from the other sources to facilitate our, our service need, okay? And of course, if they tap into our water pollution control system, our water system, they will be paying their fees and therefore they will help to facilitate that part of the game, okay? But yes, if highway user, if our population goes up and highway user money increases and our county road and bridge money, those are dollars that go directly to street for the support of our roads.
What do we rely on more, property taxes or those other, other fees and taxes?
Well, it depends on where you're talking about, which side.
You know, I mean, if we, we talked about liquor tax.
Okay.
You know, if we, if we had 25%, what would that be, $125,000 roughly? So you've got 600,000 now?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's $125,000. If we have to put in a fire station by 2030 and that station has to be operated for the next 10 years on everybody else, not that area, I would say that we'd be consuming everything that we had and a lot more.
Well, it could be. And I'm going to say that, but remember, if a fire station goes up there, it facilitates that whole area, not just the North Gate. You're talking about the Satterfield area, the Summit, all of those areas will now have a service that can get to them quicker than maybe where they're at.
There would be a factor, but we're still talking a million dollars at least for personnel a year in a fire station. We're talking some ancillary costs. We're talking probably $240,000 a year just for the truck that would go in that facility.
The other thing you would keep in mind on that is facilitating some of the equipment that exists now, you know, maybe pulling some into this station for a temporary buy. You know, maybe you won't have three, three trucks here, you'll have two and then you'll have one up there. I mean, there's ways to facilitate that growth.
So we would build a station, or we would have stations without trucks, or?
No, well, I'm just saying.
We'd take one of our 30-year-old trucks by that time and put it...
Well, or you take one of your newer ones to there. It depends on what the needs are. That would be a fire, fire chief's decision on how to facilitate with the existing equipment they have and trying to work through that. But remember, North Yellowstone, what did I say, 83 to 87 million? You're talking about a million dollars more in tax revenue without impacting your levy rate.
But we have insurances going up by over a million dollars a year. Healthcare insurance.
It doesn't affect the PDA, Roger.
I know, but...
Every time we build a fire station or do any kind of improvement, it affects the tax base. It's no different than any other fire station in the community.
And remember, I think within our TIF plan, we have built in for some support from the TIF for...
Fire station.
Fire, fire station and possible equipment, right?
No, $4 million for the fire station.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we've had an interesting discussion. We're going to turn the time back to Scott for any concluding comments and then turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I understand state council will be reviewing this TIF plan sometime March, April. Melanie's whispering April. Before then, city of Chubak and Banna County will be holding meetings to consider the, consider the intergovernmental agreements to facilitate this plan. I think in conclusion, I just want to thank the city and the city council for all the support the PDA receives and the cooperation. We very much enjoy having Mayor Blatt and Councilman Johnston on our board. And we invite any of you to attend our meetings. They are, third Wednesday?
Third Wednesday at 11 o'clock.
Third Wednesday, 11 o'clock every month. Occasionally, those get moved, but not very often. And you are always more, you're always very welcome to come and attend those meetings. And I believe that concludes my 2018 report.
Super. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Item number three has been pulled from the agenda. The city of American Falls Trail Construction Project, the students, there was a concern from the students driving over today with the weather and stuff, so we'll hear that next month. We'll move on to item number four is GBS Health Benefits for City Employees Update. GBS representatives will be on site to provide suggestions that need to be made to improve processes, to reduce costs, long-term, and suggestions of possible policy changes to help maintain health benefit levels.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking time to meet with me today and kind of go over. Well, oh, sorry. I'm AJ Argal with GBS Benefits, as I think most of you know. We do your benefits, the medical, dental, vision, life insurance, those types of things, and advise on some of the other benefits as well. We're going to kind of discuss your benefits going into fiscal year 2020, some options to save some money. And we'll also kind of go over the Teldoc experience. We'll talk about the Blue Cross experience. We do have some cause for concern that we'll discuss. We'll go into some details on the retiring program and talk about solutions to some of those problems that are popping up. First thing on the Teldoc experience, I want you to look in the top left-hand corner there. That's the savings year-to-date. That's just January only, is what the Teldoc program has saved. And they figure those savings based off about $230 for a doctor visit and then about $1,800 to $2,300 depending on the severity of an ER visit and based on the diagnosis when the employee or the dependent calls in, that's how they determine whether or not that would have been an ER visit or a doctor visit. Your current utilizations run at 15.2%. That's actually the lowest of all our groups over 100. If you look at that annualized utilization trend down there at the bottom, you can see in 2018, we started well over 30 and for some reason, we just keep going down. I really thought when we went around with HR and we did the benefit meetings back in August, we actually, that was part of it, was the Teldoc. We drive that back up. For some reason, we haven't been able to drive that number up. So HR is currently working... So HR is currently working on a training program and was going to reach out to the different departments and work with the employees and talk about the telemedicine program to hopefully drive that experience back up to get those employees utilizing that, hopefully save us a little bit more money on our healthcare expenses. Do you guys have any questions on that?
So essentially, the message is to the employees, if we don't use that, then we're going to really get hit harder with our premiums.
Yeah. And just basically, you know, so they understand the program. It's a really easy program to use and it's just for those little onesie-twosie steps, you know. When you know what's going on, maybe it's pink eye with a kid or you know you've got a sinus infection or a strep throat or something like that, when you know pretty much what's going on, the only reason you're going to the doctor is to get the antibiotic or something like that. For example, I used it on my son. He has asthma and somebody has asthma and he gets like bronchitis or something like that, we've got to be quick, got to get him on the prednisone and that, so he doesn't get pneumonia. Called in, got it, got the prednisone, got an antibiotic, had him off and rolling. I had him out of school, I had him with me at work. It was really nice. It's really easy. It's a great program if the employees will actually engage and utilize it. So we're hoping to kind of, you know, work with the different departments and drive that number up a little bit.
You said we're the lowest that you know in terms of?
By far, yeah.
What's typical of other areas?
Well, Idaho Falls, for example, they run between 30 and 40%. We had one year, we averaged 38% when they were pushing it pretty hard. My schools right now are running between 23 and 28%. And I think the City of Rexburg is probably my next lowest and they're running, I think, 22%. So you're significantly lower than most of our groups out there. We started out pretty good and I'm just not sure why we tell off.
Maybe we should be healthy, right?
I'll show you that's probably not true.
That's definitely not the correct answer.
We'll dive into that though too here in just a second. This is your current Blue Cross of Idaho experience. This is only October through December. They were able to pull in January for your renewal, but I do not have those numbers yet. If you look at the left there, that's your medical premium. That's what you guys paid Blue Cross. Then as you come across there, you have your medical claims. You have your prescription drug card claims, which you guys have always been really high on those as well. And then you have your medical drug loss ratio. You can see October was 34%, November was 57% and then December is around 86%. Keep in mind the claims lag there. So, you know, when you go to the doctor, it usually takes at least 30 to 45 days, sometimes 60 to 75 days before that physician actually files that claim. So really, December is the first month we actually have a full month of experience. I don't even think December is a full month, to be honest with you. And so 86%, that does not include the 15% utilization that Blue Cross can take based on ACA. So that's still fairly high. Generally, you do have like a high fourth quarter, you know, employees have hit their deductibles, they're trying to run up those expenses, that kind of thing. So we can, you know, kind of use that as well, but 86% coming in that third month is, you know, a bit high, but we won't really know until we start seeing January on through. You know, is that trend going to continue? Are we going to be back where we were with that? And so we're kind of waiting to see.
What would you like it to be?
You what?
What would you like it to be?
If you want a flat renewal, you want to be in the like 75, 78 range, somewhere in there. If you're looking for a 0% increase is where you're hoping. So, I mean, I was to guess, like if you continue with this trend, I'd say we're probably going to run somewhere between 86 and 90% next year on average is where we run. And you've got to add in that 15% for administration, as we've discussed before in the past, so.
You want a 75, then with that 15%?
No, without the 15%. So without the 15%, you'd be about 75 to 78 is where you're looking to be and that'll give you about a flat increase, so. I just want to touch on your large claimants. You've already got 25 large claimants and that's just October, November, December. Blue Cross actually categorizes those a little bit different than Aetna. A large claim with Blue Cross is anything $10,000 and above. So the $1.68 million you guys have currently paid, $601,000 has already gone to those 25 large claimants. And the thing I want you to take a look at up there is look at the charged amount versus the paid amount. Cross does something a little bit different than what Aetna did. Cross pays what's called a DRG, a Diagnostic Reporting Group. So what they do is they pay based off the service. What Aetna did is they paid on a percentage discount. And so it's really easy to get away with a percentage discount and bring your expenses up, but when you have a DRG, you're capped. So if someone goes in with a back surgery, maybe they need additional hardware, maybe they had an assistant surgeon, maybe it went a little bit longer, it doesn't matter. As long as they use the same IC9 or ICD10 code, that, they can't run that expense up. It's capped with that DRG reporting with Blue Cross of Idaho. Whereas with Aetna, you're getting 30 or 35% off. So the more the hospital charges or the facility charges, of course, the more they're going to get paid. And it's different with Blue Cross. I mean, look at that, one large claim at the top there, $155,000 is what was charged and only $69,000 was paid out. If we were with Aetna, we probably would have paid out $115,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. So significant savings with the network with Blue Cross versus the network with Aetna. And I think that's going to be what kind of saves us moving forward hopefully to a certain extent.
The difference is the contract Blue Cross has with the minimum provided.
Yeah, exactly. Blue Cross has about 70% of the business in the state, so they have a lot more leverage to go in there and kind of push those things around. Whereas Aetna, I mean, might have 6% or 7% in the entire state. So it's a little bit tougher for them to go out and get those discounts and things, Cause for concern, you know, already 2% of your population has incurred over 36% of your expenses with Blue Cross. You have 25 large claimants, as we discussed, and that's over $10,000 with Blue Cross. With Aetna, the experience that we did have with Aetna, you had 46 large claimants with Aetna and they define their large claimants as over 25,000, as we discussed. So 4% of your population with Aetna has incurred over 50% of your expenses. And keep in mind with Aetna, when we had the reporting, 18% of your retiree, of your retiree population, basically one in five, was actually a large claimant with Aetna. So that means one in five of your retirees that was on the plan had claims over $25,000, which is significant. Your retiree population with Aetna was running a 200% loss ratio. That means for every dollar you gave Aetna, they paid out $2 in claims. That did not include administration. And December experience with Blue Cross of Idaho and the retiree program was 194%. So we're continuing that trend moving forward. As we've discussed in the past, you do have an older and an aging demographic.
Does that mean the employees are subsidizing the retirees?
Significantly, yes, absolutely. Probably to the tune, but I figure I ran some numbers, about $275,000 of the city is subsidizing the retiree program on an annual basis, based on your current enrollment numbers right now, which is significant.
Are the retirees that move, they, when they retire, if they're not within the city's healthcare, do they come back on our healthcare or do they stay like the fire department?
No, the fire department will stay where they're at.
Okay.
They stay in that. Yep, correct.
So all the fire department retirees now will be on their own retirement plan?
Correct, yep, yep. But keep in mind, they go out earlier too with the rule of 80, so they're usually healthier when they go out as well as compared to, you know, a regular employee that's going out, rule of 90 is usually going out in their 60s.
They'll hit 65.
Just like the rest of us, right? But you do usually have a little bit healthier population in the retiree program when you have cops and fire in it because they go out a little bit younger, so. Blue Cross of Idaho fiscal renewal for 2020. Blue Cross was great, worked with our aggressive timeline. They did not hold the Aetna experience against us. We did not have complete experience from Aetna, so they actually came in and were willing to work with us and gave us what's called a trend renewal. Because we didn't have a lot of data, I mean, you're working with October through January, the Aetna experience wasn't complete, so they actually came in and gave us trend, which is currently 6.9% in Idaho, which I thought was a gift. I mean, I don't think we're going to see that again. I think this kind of gives us some time to make some of the changes we talked about, maybe correct some things, but we really got lucky and dodged a bolt on this one with a small increase, especially based on the experience that we had previously with Aetna coming into this, so.
So what do we pay as premiums right now?
About 6.7 million is what you're paying right now. This will be about a $464,000 increase to your total expenses.
It's about $20 a month for a family at the current ratios.
What was the total you gave?
You're paying about $6.7 million a year right now and you'll be paying about $7.1 million. It's about $464,000 difference between what you paid, what you're paying currently and what you will be paying fiscal year 2020, so.
Would you think this is our one-year loan?
Really, we just, if we would have had more experience and if it continued like it would have with Aetna, we would have been looking high double digits, but Blue Cross, you know, didn't want to knock your socks off coming out of the gate, they wanted to partner on this and that's why we like to work with Blue Cross. Like, look, let's see where this thing ends up, let's get case management involved, let's see where our discounts come in, let's see if we can't right this ship a little bit. So they were really willing to work with us this first year on renewal. I was surprised to get it where we were. I mean, we were talking some pretty high numbers to start and bounced all over the place and I was really happy if we were able to end up, so.
So even though we have a separate group, they're kind of making us a group within a group? Because they're looking at the state?
Oh, no, the, so basically what trend is, so trend is essentially medical inflation. So what they're saying is if you have the exact same claims next year that you have this year, it'll cost you 6.9% more. And based on the experience that we have, you know, we could be running, you know, right at 100% with administration possibly. So they're saying, you know, just to keep it even, they're going to give us a trend increase, which I think is more than fair in this situation, so.
Is that guaranteed?
Yeah, we'll lock it and we'll roll with it, absolutely, yeah. We could, if there, some of the higher numbers we were talking, what we would have done is we would have locked the number in, but if the experience got better and I've done this with other groups, we would have renegotiated that throughout the year. I've done that two or three times before, but I don't think there's any need to right now. If that experience ends up dropping in the 70s or something like that, we'll definitely go back and push, but I don't really see that happen, so. But we'll keep an eye on it. If it does look to turn, we'd definitely go back and ask for a re-rate. If they can't come back and re-rate us and come back higher, so. All right, some changes that we were talking about that I really think need to be made. The first one is move the retirees on a plan with their own experience for the fiscal year 2020. So what we would do is we'd have two plans. We would have an active plan and we'd have a retiree plan. In both plans, the rates for those would be based off their own individual experience. Obviously, with where the retiree program is running right now, that would double the rates for the retirees. And so that's something you guys would have to explore and decide, you know, what you're willing to do on that. I mean, out of the gate, if you didn't want to, we could maybe subsidize half of that and maybe the city, instead of paying the $275,000, you pay $130,000 towards their rates and keep those a little bit lower. Or you could just break it out altogether. I mean, even the state no longer offers a retiree program. You're one of the few cities left that actually offer a retiree program. So that's something you definitely need to explore. The other thing is make case and disease management mandatory. As we pointed out, you saw with those large claimants, those large claimants are driving your expenses. And the only way you can really control those large claimants is by getting them in case and disease management. The problem with the case and disease management program is that it's voluntary. So if Blue Cross, one of their nurses or physicians actually calls to engage an employee or gauge their physician, the employee has the option to opt out right now. And there's no repercussions for doing that. So what we're saying is maybe tie that to the HRA VIBA. And if the employee doesn't participate in case or disease management, then they're not eligible for the HRA VIBA. Now, you've got to figure this is only going to like affect maybe 10 to 20% of your population on a bad year. It could be as little as 5% to 8% of your population, just depends on what's going on with who. But it's something I think is really important. You can see how just one large claimant, I mean, if we could mitigate 20 or 30% of those costs, that could be huge. You're talking about, you know, the possibility of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. The one thing we talked about, instead of making it kind of an all or nothing deal with the case and disease management as well, is as long as they decline the case management, they're not eligible for their HRA VIBA, but as soon as they did accept it, they could come back in and get prorated for their HRA VIBA. You know, where you guys are paying it monthly now, they could come back in and get it. In most of my groups, what we do, it's all or nothing. Once a year, you have the option, if you opt out and you don't participate in case management, you forfeit that HRA money. We're saying, you know, you could take a little bit of a softer approach to start, say, hey, if you take the case management, you get the HRA VIBA. If you don't, you don't get the case management, but if you decide two or three months later that you do want to do the case management because you really want that HRA VIBA money, you could come back and get that and start getting those contributions again, which I think is fair to the employee. Some other changes that we feel like could be made, you can cap your vacation at 400 hours. Any hours over the 400 would not be paid out. Does make it tough for budgeting. This is a big one. This is what we've done in Isle Falls. We did this in Isle Falls back in 2008, I think is when we rolled this out, but pay out your sick leave to the HRA VIBA account. I don't know why more cities aren't doing this. This saves payroll taxes not only for the city, but also for the employee. We're all going to have medical expenses. I mean, everyone's heard about the medical crisis that we're having right now. Why would you not pay those medical expenses with a pre-tax dollar versus an after-tax dollar? Anything eligible under Section 213D of IRS Code would be eligible for this. They can pay their Medicare premiums, they could pay the retiree insurance premiums to the City of Pocatello, they can pay dental, vision expenses. I mean, employees are going to use this money. It's not like you're taking the money, putting it into an account the employee can't touch or put it into an account on a pre-tax basis, they can pull that money from. You've got to, payroll taxes alone for the city would be about 7% and for the employees, depending on their tax bracket, could be 15 to 30%. To me, this is the biggest no-brainer out of all of them. Other cities that are currently doing this are Isle Falls, Boise, Post Falls and Coeur This is an example of how the policy could read. Pay out 20% for the first 400 hours, 30% for the second 400 hours and 40% for the hours that exceed 801. It's calculated on a bi-weekly basis plus longevity ad pay, of course, sworn police officers when applicable. And then back to the HRA VIBA, of course, your firefighters would not be eligible for that, the collective bargaining agreement that they have would exclude them from that. We have the same thing in Isle Falls. They like to take their money and lump some and go buy a new boat or a new truck instead of putting it towards medical expenses, so. So you guys, I guess, got some decisions moving forward in fiscal year 2020. I mean, do you want to pull the retirees off, put them on their own experience? Do you want to subsidize that on any level? Are you willing to make case and disease management mandatory? I think that's the biggest thing you can do to improve your overall population health is to make that case and disease management mandatory. I'd definitely suggest that one. Are you going to cap the vacation payout and then the payout, the sick leave into the HRA VIBA? I think that one's huge too. To me, that's a no-brainer. It's an easy decision as well, so. And that's it. Do you have any other questions?
What would be the downside for employees? Because VIBA, my understanding is that you really got to transfer it over into mainly, when you retire, you need to transfer it over into vision and dental or Medicare comes after it.
If you're on Medicare. It depends on whether or not you're on Medicare, so it's going to depend on when you retire. So for police and fire, they retire so early, they're easily going to burn through all that money before they hit Medicare. And then other employees depend on when they retire, they usually do as well. So if they retire before age 65, usually what happens to that HRA VIBA money is it goes towards those retiree premiums to pay those. And then you're correct, once you hit Medicare eligible age, then you turn it into a dental and vision at that time. So there could be a disadvantage to employee, maybe an employee retires at 67, they're going to have, you know, $30,000 or $40,000 in that sick leave bank built up. It's going to be tough to use that on dental and vision expenses, but it does go to your next of kin as well, so.
So the disadvantage is greater the older you are when you retire?
The older you are when you retire makes it a little bit harder to use that money, correct. But for the employees that retire before age 65, it works out great for them because they just usually, they usually end up using it all just to pay their retiree insurance premiums.
These suggestions look very positive. At what point will we need to act on this?
Heather, what kind of timeline do we have?
It was hard for me to wait till February to bring it to you. This is information that needs to go out to employees if we're going to do it right away, especially three and four. Those happen within this fiscal year and retirees need as much notice as possible that we're changing the structure of their plan. So I think we're bumping up against any sort of timeframe we have if we're going to implement it for the end of this year and the beginning of 2020.
I think you'll see actually, some of your employees actually retire earlier too if you do make these changes. We did this in Isle Falls and we saw that. We had a huge mass migration. huge mass migration. People actually went out and retired just because they didn't want to get caught for this, so.
So in that case, my comment is that that's, that's why we went with AJ's organization was to help us get our costs under control. And so I think we really have to take every suggestion that he has given us and do it to the full extent. We've got to get aggressive about making sure we get our costs under control. So I think everything that you recommended, I think we should do. So I would make a motion that we do all of the recommendations.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, any other discussion?
Do you know how many people have been affected by number three?
I don't. January 1st, they could have up to 400 hours in their banks. It says how much they accrue per pay period. We ran a couple of examples of people that we know are retiring or have retired. The difference in their vacation payout, if they're pulling at the longest accrual is anywhere between $8,000 and $12,000 for someone who's been here for 30 years and makes, you know, over $35 an hour. But then we're back to the argument of vacation is meant to be used.
Uh-oh. There's an attorney that just approached the bench there.
I didn't see him.
There's a pause, so we'll hold it in hand. Sorry. Mayor and Council, Jared Johnston, City Attorney. I would just advise that due to the nature of work sessions versus regular council meetings, which we will be talking about soon, because I know there's some confusion on action items at these meetings versus regular council meetings, that if the motion that's, that's on the table right now goes forward, that you consider amending it to give direction to change the policies to allow for this, and then that policy adoption would come back before you as a final action at a council meeting.
I would be happy to amend my motion as such.
I have no problem seconding, seconding that.
Okay, I have one, one question. Can, and I think you answered it. VIBA can be paid, can be used to pay for their premiums, monthly premiums, is that correct?
And that's what most use it for when they go out and retire.
Any other discussion, Council?
I have a quick comment. I feel like these are great suggestions. I don't know if we should be making case management and all these things mandatory. I feel like it's a little pushy from our end. Does the city, or do you think people have the, the employees have the agency to make the decision themselves whether they want to be?
I think we're still...
I feel like when we make it mandatory, we're kind of like punishing them when they, they don't have a case manager.
If they're not managing their health condition, though, they're punishing the entire population there and driving up costs for everyone else. And that would be, that would be the caveat to it, in my opinion. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying. You're right, it's kind of Big Brother, and it's kind of putting your thumb on them to a certain extent. But with what your expenses are doing and how they're spiraling out of control, at some point, we've got to get a grasp on these. And if you guys want, if, after we control the situation, if you want to back that off a little bit, we possibly could and make that maybe one of the things that the HRA VIBA goes to. But I would suggest out of the gate, we get aggressive with it because I think, you know, with the experience we talked about with that and that, we're headed down a dark road, and we need to, we need to correct it quickly.
And if I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to follow on that. Is it possible to back off of it? I mean, would realistically...
It's a year-to-year decision every year. So we could actually, we can change it any way you want to. So maybe like with some of my groups, like with the HRA VIBA, what we do is there's five criteria you have to meet, and if you miss more than one of those criteria, you're not eligible for the HRA VIBA. Maybe we set up something like that where there is five criteria, and if you miss this one and another one, then you're not eligible for it. So if you didn't want to be quite as aggressive with it, you could, you know, maybe add this to it as well. But I still think the ones that you're, you really want to get in touch with are, we're not going to be reaching out to. I mean, the ones that really need the help, we're still not going to be getting into the programs. They're still going to opt out.
One of the things I think, when we implemented VIBA, it wasn't, it was an incentive. You know, first thing, we're creating VIBA because we're going to raise your deductible, and this is an offset we're going to provide. And then, over the years, we found out that people weren't taking advantage of the health fare like they should and following up. So we tied a certain portion of the VIBA to participation in the health fare and your health visit to your doctor. Those two things had to happen. I think it's $700 now. So the case management mandatory effective, that, that's with regard to VIBA, which is an incentive. It's not a discipline, right?
It has traditionally been a carrot, not a stick.
Yeah, so, so that part of it is incentivizing. It's real hard for me to see all the implications for each one of these things and vote on them as a block. And I think employees need to have a little time to see what we're looking at. So my recommendation is that we make each one of those a separate action item, so that, because I think there's a couple of them that are, will go right away, but there may be a couple of them that are hard to implement. So, you know, maybe if we make them, where each is voted on separately, then it lets the employees have some feedback to us before then.
Did you have a comment? I thought you made it, maybe, maybe I just thought you had. Okay, Council, any other discussion? So we have a motion on the floor. The motion was by Adamson and a second by Johnston. Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir.
What's the motion?
Adamson?
Oh, just a minute, if you would, if you'd read the motion.
Sure. The, was revised because of Council's, Jared's advice was, due to the nature of the work session, to go ahead and consider giving direction to staff to move forward and then come back again to a regular council meeting to adopt. And that was on all four of the proposed changes.
That still gives opportunity for discussion individually in the future.
So Jared just nodded, yes, we will make it. So could we pull one of these at that meeting, say, I move that we, we adopt three of the four things? Okay.
It's just directing staff to bring it to another meeting, correct?
To a council meeting, yeah.
Okay. Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Anon?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
AJ, thank you for your work. I know that we were talking about high, high double-digit increases, and to have a number like 6.9%, that's as low as I think we've had in 10 years, quite frankly.
So I still think it's kind of a Band-Aid. It's just, you know, bridging that gap. So that's why I think we need to be aggressive with it to make sure we can keep it down for next year, too. I'd hate to come in next year with a huge number for it.
Yeah, we would, too, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Yep, thank you. Move to agenda item number five, is fire union could quarterly update. Members of the Pocatello Fire Union will give the council an update of their activities for the past quarter.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Morning, Mildenheimer, President of Pocatello Firefighters Local 187. I've got Adam Davis, our Vice President, with me, and Scott Lockhart, who is our Secretary. I just briefly wanted to go over some of the stuff from the last time that I, that I saw you guys. I came into the last council meeting last week, and we had Fred Meyer, the Sterkline fundraiser of Fred Meyer. We ended up bringing in $2,300. It'll be donated to the Guttenium Lymphoma Society, and that'll help a long ways for those guys' fundraising goals. Wanted to thank the citizens and the council for their support on that. One other issue that, that came up recently is a firefighter that, that we know at the state level was over in the legislature, and he bumped into Representative Randy Armstrong from District 28. And he was hoping to talk to Representative Armstrong about our PTSI legislation that's there. And unfortunately, Representative Armstrong had a major miscommunication or a major misconception of how the fire department and the ambulance service were paid. He was under the impression that, that when an ambulance and a fire truck went on a call, the, the ambulance was paid straight time, and the fire truck was paid, the personnel on the fire truck was paid at time and a half, which is absolutely incorrect. And I was hoping that, that the mayor or the council would be able to reach out and try to clarify that to him, to try to clean that up so that he's not spreading rumors and that he understands that, that we're all paid straight time.
I will do that.
Yes, sir.
Today.
Okay. So I would like to, to give you guys a little, little spreadsheet. Do you mind if I step up?
Please.
So it seems timely to go over insurance costs immediately following your presentation from, from HR and from your representative there. And this is just a, this is just an overview of what FY19 numbers look like. With our insurance, the Northwest Firefighter Trust, that is the cost to the city that's, that's in the column D. And in column E, that's what the cost to the city for the same employee would be if we were on the city's healthcare plan. And that's after the, that's after the employee copay. I want to remind the, the council because part of that discussion was that, that retirees cost 200% of, of what they put in. When we moved over to the Northwest Trust, we also took our retirees with us. So all of our retirees and all of our staff are part of our insurance plan. And so, so that's something that, that's not a burden that's going to be ongoing for the city. That's something that we, that, that we carry with us. In the last year for FY19, we took a 7.9% increase, and I want to remind the council that our CBA specifies that the city will be obligated for nothing more than an 8% increase to any costs in our insurance plan. So I know that the 6.9 that they just put out there was a really good number, but built into our contract, the city will have no obligation to pay more than, than 8%. And we only took a 7.9 this last year. So with, with that said, the, the impact portion, where we've got employees there, unfortunately, I haven't spoken with Joyce recently because of her health issues and stuff like that. But traditionally, we, I met with Joyce and went over employee numbers and where we fit into different categories. That was our best estimate, based on the last, based on the last visit that I had with Joyce, of where our employee pool sits within the different categories of the, of, of the insurance brackets. And if you look at that, there's the, we have a breakdown of the savings per employee per month in, in Item F. And that's, that's for each one of those groups, and that's how much cheaper this, that's how much less the city pays for our insurance than they do if we were in the general pool, which overall comes up to an annual savings of about $87,000. And if you remember, when we went to the Northwest Trust, we gave back $1,000 per member in VIBA as well. And so that, so that totals $90,000, and that's how we got to the bottom line there. One other thing that, that they were talking, some of the, some of the action items that they put out there, that you guys just, just approved moving forward with, our insurer, our sick leave does, does not go towards buying a new truck. It's already captured into the MRR, which is, which is a post-retirement, or post-employment retirement medical plan that we've had for about 15 years. So the money that we get on buyout for sick leave automatically rolls into the MRR, and we utilize that for post-employment healthcare. And that's something that we've been doing for about 15 years. On Item Three, it, it seems funny that, that, that you guys said, you know, that you just approved Item Three. I, I don't know how vacation buyout ties in with insurance. It seems funny that that was included in that presentation. And so, because they seem like two unrelated items. So, do you guys have any questions about, about this?
I need some clarifications. So we're only paying $90,000 a year into your VIBA now?
Yes, sir. You were paying $2,000 per member into our VIBA prior to us leaving Northwest Trust. And part of the price of admission for us leaving to go to the Northwest Trust Insurance was to give back $1,000 a member in VIBA.
Any other questions, Council?
Okay. Without further ado, we, in your last study session, in your last work session, you guys received a presentation from HR that went over compensation, and we felt the, the need to address a few of the issues that we saw with that. You know, it seemed like a significant focus of, of that presentation was directed towards what our compensation is, and we just wanted to, to have the opportunity to, to speak with you guys because we're about to open for wage negotiations right now. So we'll go over a little bit of working out classification, and we'll go over, we'll kind of plug our membership into the hybrid employee scale, the pay scale that the city uses. And we're going to just talk a little bit about the necessities of, of emergency services over time and go over a few items with you. So working out a classification is when a member of a lower rank...
Uh-oh. I have to make one comment just, just quickly, and I don't know exactly where they're going. I haven't seen the presentation, the council and mayor. But I would remind the union and council and mayor that we, like he said, we are about to open salary negotiations. And so I don't want this to turn into a portion of that salary negotiation, only because it hasn't been noticed properly before you, or that we have city representatives that handle that, not the council at this point. So we need to be careful not to go into that realm at this point today. Fair enough?
Yeah, we're not, we're not planning on, on trying to negotiate any numbers. None of you guys are on the negotiation team. We have met with the, with the city as far as compensation, and we've been doing some comparisons. Just wanted to briefly show you what the results of that committee's work was.
And I think that would be inappropriate, quite honestly. That's, that's the negotiation between the representatives of the city, the negotiation team and the union. And today's meeting is for union updates, the activities they've been up to. It's not to lay the groundwork for those, for those negotiations.
Do, you know, we'll, we'll try to skip past that slide.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
So, so working out classification was, was slightly mischaracterized in the, in the HR presentation a month ago. Working on classification is when a member works from a lower rank into a rank higher than, than what they normally work. And it requires a significant amount of training to be able to, to work above what your pay grade is. And in, in historically, what you would do is like, if a firefighter worked as a driver, then for the shift that the driver, that, that he was working as a driver, he would be paid as a driver. Likewise, when a, when a, when a driver operator is working as a captain, then they're doing the roles of a captain, and so for that shift, they get, they generally get paid as captain. However, over time, that was a little bit difficult to track. So what we did is we went to a working out of classification pay, which you get in your, in your regular paycheck to, to compensate for that, so that you don't get it only when you step into that position. It's just to kind of smooth that out and help out with, with finance and also to help out with people's regular paycheck. As an example of, of how that works, Scott receives working out of classification, which if he were to, to break it down, it covers about 20 shifts of him working, stepping up to work as a captain. Over the, over the last several years, what's happened is, is because of, because of absences or because of different items, Scott's had to step up last year an average of about 38 times. And so the city's actually getting a significant bargain on that because if Scott were actually being paid as a captain every time he worked as a captain, it would have cost almost twice as much money in working out of classification to pay him. What's that, Councilman?
It seems like, again, to Jared's point, we're not talking about activities over the last quarter. I think we're, this is, this shouldn't, we shouldn't even be discussing this.
I'm just clarifying what that is.
If those aren't activities of the union over the last quarter, that's what's on the agenda.
Okay. This is, this is clarification of a presentation that was a month ago.
Wasn't given to us.
The, the presentation was given to you by, by the HR representatives.
They're talking, yeah, they're talking about last month's...
What's on the agenda is giving an update of, of union activities for the past quarter. That's all that's on the agenda.
Okay.
And they're responding to something we've already done. Is that fair at this point? I don't think we've done anything. I think we had a presentation. But I mean, they're just responding to a presentation. So this is information regarding what's been presented. But if we go beyond this, then we're into negotiation, right? I'm saying a nod on here.
Yeah, to Council, Councilmember Chita's point, typically, these quarterly updates have been... Yeah, to councilmember Cheetham's point, typically, these quarterly updates have been union activities that have occurred over the last quarter to keep council appraised of what's going on. If you wanted to make the argument that this is an extension of those activities in response to a presentation that's been given to council, then that's ultimately up to the mayor and you as council. I just want to make sure that we don't go into anything that would be part of the negotiation. As far as, like I say, interpreting whether we're within the agenda item today, that's up to you guys.
I'd like an answer to one question. Why did Scott have to work 38 hours? Did we not have a captain available?
Well, what happened is if a captain is off on vacation, we don't have extra captains. We have one captain at each station. So if a captain is off for union business, like I am here today, or is off for vacation or for sick leave, or even in the instance that the battalion chief is gone and the captain is working out of classification as a battalion chief, those would be items where a driver would have to step up and work out of class.
Thank you.
And if you realize too, though, if Scott's working out of classes, if he's a driver working out of class as a captain, someone else is working out of class as a firefighter working as a driver.
It's simple when it's explained that way. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So I think that covers working out of class.
Council can let us continue.
Yeah, well, and I guess, I guess we're kind of at a spot to where I don't know whether we're going to be allowed to continue or not. We can put up the next slide, and we can see what the council's feeling on it is. We did want to show where we fit within the city's hybrid pay plan. You know, we're...
He's shaking his head.
That would jump into the negotiation part of it from what I'm hearing. So let's see.
I guess I have a question or two, though.
Yes, sir.
Would you brag a minute about the successes of the coat drive and some of those wonderful things that have taken place in the last month, the last quarter?
Yes, sir. We did hand out, I think it was close to 400 coats. The guy who handles that for us is Jason Wytham, and he's over there. And Jason does a fantastic job of raising money and getting the coats supplied that we, that the city requires for needy children. Jason's also been working real hard at fundraising to be prepared for this, for our coat drive next year. He's already done a ski day up at Pebble where $5 of every lift ticket that was sold that day went back to us. We were able to raise $140 there to help out with our efforts for next year. You know, like I mentioned before, we've got the Seattle stair climb coming up. We were able to deliver almost 1,000 turkeys to, well, I'm sorry, I don't think it was quite 1,000, but we were able to deliver a significant amount of turkeys to help with Thanksgiving and help make sure that people had food on the table for Thanksgiving this last year.
Can I just make a comment on that? That was one of those things that the last minute, they were really short of turkeys for the food bank. And I made a phone call to Andy and to the police union, and the two unions just stepped up like crazy and really, truly, I think saved Thanksgiving for a number of people in Eastern Idaho. And so that, you say it cavalierly, like, well, we just did this. But it was a big deal that was pulled together in a matter of, I think, 48 hours, I think, is what the timeframe was. So that was a big deal.
Jason just did give me the actual numbers on coats. We raised $9,967 for coats last year and donated 332. And then one final item on the turkeys. We'd also like to thank Winco because Winco did a great job, and they stepped up and gave us a good price so that we could stretch our money as far as we could in purchasing those turkeys. So it was pretty impressive. If anybody saw any of the pictures, Eric Anderson, who's our treasurer, had his entire pickup loaded to the gills with turkeys. In fact, he had so many turkeys that they didn't all fit in the back, and he had his backseat loaded as well. So...
Those are the things I like to really hear, Eric. Thank you.
Yeah, it's not a problem. Okay, I guess with that, since we're not going to be allowed to continue with the rest of this, then I think we've wrapped it up. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Any other questions, council? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we will move to agenda item number six, regional economic development of Eastern Idaho Ready update. Dana Kirkham, chief executive officer of regional economic development of Eastern Idaho Ready, will be present to give an update of Ready's activities and achievements.
Thank you.
Oh, this is for...
I've got it in my hand.
All right. Good morning, mayor and council. First, I'd just like to apologize for my casual attire. I'm on my way to Boise for meetings tomorrow, so it's a bit of a travel day for me, so I apologize. I think before I get started, we had an executive board meeting yesterday. Mayor Blad was present, and perhaps at the end of this presentation would be a good time to have a discussion about that a little bit. But he was pretty clear in his indication that Pocatello is perhaps not entirely behind the Ready effort, and that the council in general may not be particularly supportive, which is your prerogative. So hopefully, we can have that conversation a little bit when we're done and talk a little bit about, you know, the future. Because I do think that we're at a pivotal time in Ready's existence, and Pocatello's support is essential, so...
Could you introduce you and your guests for our audience at home?
Oh, yes. Dana Kirkham, CEO of Regional Economic Development for Eastern Idaho. I have Ryan Allen with me, who is your appointed representative. And I would remind the council that you also have another seat open, and we're waiting for an appointment to that seat as well. All right, I'm going to spend the majority of today talking about some of the data that we're collecting from the strategic plan. But before that, I wanted to go over just a few key things that Ready has done in the last six months, particular to our region and really as a convening organization. In November, we hosted Mary Daly, who was the newly appointed CEO of the San Francisco Fed. She gave a presentation, her first public presentation since that appointment in the region. And when I say the region, I don't mean our region, I mean her region, which is California, Washington, Oregon, Montana, Utah, Idaho. It was a very interesting, insightful presentation. She talked about the economic climate of the nation and particularly what that means to rural communities. So it was very informative. But what's more important than her presentation is the relationship that's come out of that presentation. And as a result, we are working with the San Francisco Fed to work together on a workforce development program. And they've had done some other programs throughout the nation that have been extremely successful, connecting business with internships and apprenticeships. So we'll be working with Idaho State University, with College of Eastern Idaho, with Brigham Young University, Idaho, and with the San Francisco Fed to put together a program in our region. And I would point out that they are only interested in this partnership because we come to them as a regional block, because we come as 300,000 strong. They were very clear that if it was just a Pocatello effort, just an Idaho Falls effort, just a Rexburg effort, they would not be interested because the economy of scale would not be there. So that's one example of why a regional organization matters. I've talked to you in the past about our home builders meeting in October. We pulled all the home builders together from Pocatello to Rexburg to have a conversation about the quote-unquote "housing crisis." And of course, one of the revelations from that was that perhaps the housing crisis isn't a residential crisis as much as it's a transitional and temporary housing crisis. It appears that what is needed is apartments, and our home builders are not going to solve that problem. That will be a developer issue or someone who's willing to take the risk and make the investment to build a complex like that. Our advisory board meeting was in December. Many of you attended. I appreciated that very much. We gave an economic update then. We had all of our federal programs present to talk about their new hires. I'll have some of that data in our slides here in a minute. We also had all of our higher education facilities across the region present to talk about programs that they've developed specifically to our region to help with workforce development. One of the most substantial things we've done in the last six months is completed this economic impact report for the small modular reactor, which I would remind you is a commercial venture but will be cited at the Idaho National Laboratory, but it is not an Idaho National Laboratory venture. I'm going to go over some of the data with that here in a minute. But this is significant because this is the first time, since it's a first-in-kind technology, this is the first time that numbers have been put to it to understand what it means with regard to employment, what it means with regard to dollars spent back into our communities, and what we potentially have to gain from having that here in our backyard. It is a UAMPS and a new-scale effort, and hopefully, construction starts in 2021. But we'll talk a little bit about that here in a minute. Coming up, we have some activities, well, let me talk about, we have formed the Energy Technology Environment Group, ETEG. ETEG is an independent group that falls under Ready but works for advocacy for all things, energy, technology, and environment-related. So they will be coming to your council in the spring to give you kind of a nuclear 101. It will be a 20-minute presentation, and hopefully, at the end of that presentation, everyone will be able to tell in two sentences exactly what is happening out at the Idaho National Laboratory and in the Idaho Cleanup Project, and some of the projects that are coming down the line and why we should be supportive as a community. In the next few months, we have some big events happening. The 26th of March will be at Site Selectors Guild in Salt Lake City. That's a national event. It was hosted in Cincinnati last year. It brings all of the site selectors from around the world to look at potential sightings. We will go as a regional effort. We have regional collateral pulled together. We are a sponsor of this event, which was a significant investment, but I think very appropriate since it's in Salt Lake City. And we're definitely playing on the fact that a lot of the site selectors that are coming are coming because they're interested in Salt Lake, and we're saying, well, look, we're right down the road, right down the I-15 corridor. We have something to offer too. April 24th, Colliers is doing a Colliers Economic Outlook Event. They do this event in Boise, and it's been very successful. They want to start one in Eastern Idaho. We are a supporting member of that, so we are helping to sponsor. We are certainly helping them with speaker lineups and with attendance. But I think this is going to be a good thing for our region. And the theme this year is "Why Eastern Idaho." So they're bringing in several industry partners who have chosen to locate and do business in Eastern Idaho and talk about why they made that decision. And hopefully, we will also have site selectors at this event from around the nation that might be interested in Eastern Idaho. Select USA in June, June 10th, in Washington, DC. I have attended Select USA in the past. I'm not necessarily sold on it yet, but I will tell you, Tom Keely, the new commerce director, is trying to go a new direction with this, and so we feel like we need to support him. And so in the past, our region has actually taken the lead at Select USA, but this year, the state will take the lead, and they are organizing us by region. We are taking leadership of that and organizing our region and our economic developers to go and potentially, yes, sir.
When you state "take the lead," what does that really mean?
It means coordinate the effort. So we had a conference call just yesterday pulling together all of the people that will be participating. It means we're sending out the information to say these are the industries that are coming to Select USA. Who are you interested in having an appointment with? We will set up those appointments. We'll make sure that we have the right representation in the room, the right decision-makers in the room, and hopefully...
Pretty much economic development people, not just employers or developers?
All economic development people. That's who's there. Yep, that's who goes to this. And you have to be an economic developer or a public official to qualify to attend. So, and they are a little bit behind because of the government shutdown, so we'll see how this all plays out. Hopefully, the government stays open. All right, so I want to go over the mission statement. There seems to be some confusion about what Ready's purpose really is. So ours is in three, it's a three-legged stool, so to speak, so protect, expand, attract. We protect businesses that are already in our ecosystem. We help businesses that are here have an environment that allows them to expand and grow, and hopefully, the last is that we attract new businesses to the area. So we have focused, particularly in the last six months, on building a foundation and really coming together to understand the data for our region and put together a strategic plan. And that strategic plan will be done in June. But along the way, we have found some interesting things that I want to talk to you about today. And one of them is that, well, I forgot about this slide. This is basically the things that we didn't have to do research for. These are the things that common sense tells us we have in our region that are viable and good things to leverage. So we have five federal programs. That's pretty remarkable when you consider the economy of scale and the per capita impact that that has on our region. We have three higher education universities. So we have Idaho State University here in Pocatello. We have BYU Idaho in Rexburg. We have the University of Idaho at University Place in Idaho Falls. And I would remind you that that program is specific to the Idaho National Laboratory. Those programs have been developed to help them with their career training. And then we have the newly formed College of Eastern Idaho, a two-year associate-level university that's working very nicely with our four-year programs as well. We have 32 school districts. We could discuss whether that's good or bad, but there you have it. We obviously are leading in healthcare. Every one of these that is mentioned is a regional facility, meaning that they have a facility in more than one city across the region, or some kind of facility in more than one city across the region. So that's pretty remarkable, too, when you consider that we're only 300,000 strong. And then these are some of our leaders in industry, not all by any means, but some. But what's missing is we don't have regional demographics. So that's why the data collection has been so important. We have demographics by county, but we don't have an aggregate of what that means if we're really going to market ourselves as a region from Pocatello to Teton Valley. So that's really what we've been working on pretty intensely the last couple of months, and like I said, will be completed in June. So some of the data that's interesting, this is our population growth on a regional basis by county from 1990 to 2017. You can see that the good news is we haven't lost population in any of our counties, but we haven't grown in all of our counties either. In fact, the four counties that have grown the fastest are Bonneville, Madison, Jefferson, and Teton. And so what we're doing now is looking at the data and saying, okay, why have they grown? Why has their population grown? Is it growing because people are retiring there? Is it growing because industry is opening up shop and they're coming for jobs? Is it growing because there are more children born in that demographic and more are under the age of 21? So that's the information we're trying to understand a little bit clearer. And for the counties that haven't had a lot of growth, why is that? Are they losing population and have enough of a birth rate that it's balancing itself out? Or is there really something to be concerned about in the areas that are stagnant? We're focusing on identifying our five key industries and the five key industries for the region as a whole. So that might mean that when we get done with the strategic plan, that it's not necessarily Pocatello and Banix five key industries. It's what are the five key industries leveraged across the region as a whole. So these are the five that are coming to the surface now, but our data collection's not complete. But agriculture still is number one. Number one industry in every county in Eastern Idaho. It's important to remember. Healthcare is second. Advanced manufacturing, third. Technology, fourth. But we're casting a very broad net when we say technology. And then energy is number five. So if those numbers bear out, those will be the five key industries for... But we're casting a very broad net when we say technology. And then energy is number five. So if those numbers bear out, those will be the five key industries for our region. And that's when we'll start to look at the ecosystem and say, what do they need to survive? What do they need to grow? What's missing that we need to attract so that these businesses can continue to be successful and build a network economy?
What was your number four?
Technology. But it's broad. It's a broad, it's a broad reach. I just pulled this. This is just some very random data from the NAICS codes going down to two digits, which is, which is a deep dive. You don't usually go past four digits. So we're down to two. This is specific to Bannick County. And I think one of the things that's really interesting is that you can look at your industries and you can see, and this is the number of people employed in those industries over time from 1990 to 2017. And you can see that you've had growth in most of your industries. So that's a very positive indicator. Some you've had more significant growth than others. Obviously, healthcare has boomed and you can see the result of that in Portnoy and Bingham.
What is education services Dana?
Yeah, so that's everything that, all the supporting elements of your university and your school district. So that's your vendors, that's your, you know, the tech system to keep them running. Any, anything that supports them. It's not educators. It's anyone who supports their activities. Okay, so why does all of this data matter? Well, it matters because if we're going to grow and we're going to determine who we want to be, we need to be able to interpret this information accurately and understand what we need to, like I said, build a successful ecosystem. So one of the things we're focused on is median income. So this is the median income aggregated across Eastern Idaho. And when I say median income, that means for one wage earner. So it's different than household income. And so for a, the average single wage earner in Eastern Idaho is right around $47,000 a year. And in the state, around $52,000 and close to 57 nationally. So we know that we are $10,000 behind the national median income. We understand that if we could increase that, just by that $10,000, that that would have a substantial impact on our economy. It would put more dollars in the pockets of Eastern Idahoans, but in turn, they would spend those dollars in our local economy. So we think this is one of the things that we should be focusing on, is how to increase the median income. And part of that will come through higher paying, more sustainable jobs. We've done a quick look because one of the things that's emerging is a knowledge-based economy. Knowledge-based economy, meaning an economy that's heavy on technology, heavy on intellectual property, not necessarily, it does have some artificial intelligence built into it. So we're looking at the regions across the nation that have boomed in a knowledge-based economy. Silicon Valley, of course, would be the gold standard. I'm not saying that we want to be Silicon Valley. We're just looking at this for, really just comparison purposes. The Triangle in North Carolina, that's Durham, Chapel Hill, that area. Salt Lake City has emerged as one of the leading, in fact, the fastest-growing knowledge-based economy in the nation. And of course, we're right down the road from that. So this just gives you some indication of what their economies look like in comparison to ours. The first number is population. Obviously, we're significantly trailing. Second is median household income. So that's different than median income. That's the combination of all the wage earners in a home. So you may have two wage earners, you may have an adult child that's contributing to the income. This is the average median income. So that's kind of an interesting number because you can see, obviously, we're a long way from Silicon Valley, but we're not that far off from Salt Lake City and from the Triangle. But you can see that one of the downsides to booming quickly is the increase in the cost of living. And you see that in the median home price. Anywhere from a million dollars in Silicon Valley to $150,000 is the median home price in Eastern Idaho. So what does this information tells, tell us? Well, it tells us that we want to play in the knowledge-based economy, but we want to do it strategically and we want to do it methodically. And we don't want to have a big boom because we don't want a spike in our, one of the great reasons to do business in Idaho is our low cost of living. And we don't want to violate that. So we have to be careful about how we grow. These are our federal programs and just their projections over the next 18 months for new hires. So you can see that the FBI will be hiring 300 new physicians in the next 12 to 18 months, 1,500 at the INL, it's pretty impressive, and 135 at the nuclear reactors facility for the Navy over the next four years. One of the things that we are finding most interesting about this data is that the majority, 90% of those new jobs will require at least a bachelor's degree. And in many cases, more than that. So why does that matter? Well, again, this is our comparison. These are, these numbers represent, the first number represents the number of facilities of higher education in these economies. So in Silicon Valley, there's 50-plus universities. That's kind of staggering. 16 in North Carolina, six in South, in Salt Lake City, and four in Eastern Idaho. So actually, per capita, we're right in there. That's a very positive indicator. But then when you look at bachelor's degrees plus, so this is the portion of the population that has a bachelor's degree or higher. 50% in Silicon Valley, 43% in North Carolina. I was shocked, but 51.3% in Salt Lake Valley, 23% in Eastern Idaho. This is a big problem. And this is a problem that we have to address and we have to figure out why our kids are not growing on. So first, we look at our graduation rates. And that's really difficult data to pull together because everybody finds that number differently. And we've had to wait it for the, for the, for Eastern Idaho. So that's the number at the bottom, 88.9% is the Eastern Idaho average. But you can see that Bannick's not that bad, 89.4%. But, but really, because we need this go-on rate to increase, we need this number to increase, increase too. But I would just say that 89.4% of your students graduated from high school and 38% of them went on to higher education.
Dana, what's the timetable here? Is this one year, five years?
This is, this is just last year's.
Okay.
Yep. This is last year's cohort.
You said 38% went on?
38% went on to higher education. Now, I know that there is, in this culture, some indication that the LDS missions factor into that because students leave at the age of 18 and don't return. But when we look at the go-on rate, we're capturing 2.5 years out. So we're capturing those, if they're coming back and going to school, we're capturing them in that data. So 38% of your population is going on to higher education.
How many graduate?
From college?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we know that it's that 23% number is the number of, I, we, I don't know.
I don't think that's a true number because we have a lot of outflugs.
You have a lot of what?
Outflugs. People get a degree here.
And then leave.
Then the other places offer better salaries and they leave.
But that's definitely, I'm going to show you some data that, that talks about that as well. But yes, that's correct. The number of these students that, your 38% that go on, how many of them graduate? I haven't tracked that number.
One minor question. About 89.4%, does that represent people who could have dropped out of school as early as they could at 16?
That's a great question. So this represents all of the students, they're, you're capturing all of the students that came in as freshmen and they've, and they've chartered them through the four years.
Okay.
But it also captures someone who might have moved in, in that four-year block. But it also eliminates the person that might have moved out. We're taking them out of the data. We're saying they weren't potentials. We're saying you had 1,075 students that had the potential to graduate last year that started as freshmen and only 963, or 963 graduated. That's how we're looking at it here.
I got the impression from Superintendent Howell of the Pocatello School District that it was a higher number than that and so on.
Well, I, I think that Pocatello, it is a higher number. Remember, Bannick County, you have Marsh Valley and.
Correct. It's all of your high schools. This is aggregated over all of your high schools in the county.
I think our school district, he said about 92.
Yes.
So, but that's Pocatello and Chubbe, not all of Bannick County.
And, and I would point out, I actually sat down with some, I haven't, I haven't been here to sit down with your superintendents, but they're on my list. Because, you know, we can look at the numbers, but there's often a story behind the numbers and trying to understand that a little bit better. And so I've sat down with Bonneville County and tried to understand their numbers a little bit better. And one of the things that we talked about was, what are you doing? What are you as a school district doing to increase the go-on rate? And they said, well, you know, one of the things we're doing is we're requiring that all students graduate with nine college credits by the time that they graduate from high school. So, well, that's a good start. So then I asked the question, well, because I was very interested. One of the things that Governor Little talks a lot about is this dual enrollment and getting kids an associate's degree by the time they graduate from high school. I will tell you that Bannick County is doing better than most of the counties in the state of Idaho on that issue. However, it's not as amazing as we think. Because I said, well, what is that number? So I called the State Board of Education and said, what is that number? How many kids graduated in the state of Idaho last year with an associate's degree? 61. 61 kids graduated. That's it. In the whole state with an actual associate's degree. So I asked the superintendent, I said, what is the barrier? Why are more kids, is the course load too, too difficult? Is the program not well enough developed? And he said, no. The problem is, we don't have enough qualified teachers. You have to have a master's degree or higher to teach the dual enrollment course. And he said, and our retention rate is terrible. Well, that goes back to teacher salary, doesn't it? So we have a bigger problem. And it, but this also eliminates some things that we need to be talking about, like, for instance, in Bannick and Bonneville County, because of the Idaho National Laboratory, there is a higher concentration of master and PhD-level people. But right now, for them to teach at a high school, they have to have a teaching certificate. And they don't want to go back and get that. So we should be talking to our legislation about change, or legislators about changing that requirement appropriately so that they meet some kind of metric, but that, that they can go into our schools and teach those courses so that we can increase the go-on rate.
One little comment.
Yes.
Some of my readings suggest that kids actually develop the propensity to drop out in grade school. That they, their, their mentality of learning is imprinted on them very early. So by fourth or fifth grade, their response to education, now it's not all of them, acceptance, but a lot of them are imprinted in a way that they're not going to succeed academically. And so they go to the place that they have to get, which is 16-years-old, and they drop out. There, there have been some studies on that, but so.
No, you're, you're right on with that data. And in fact, that is a priority of the current governor's office, is to work to make sure that all students are reading at a third-grade level before they leave the third grade, to address that very issue.
Dana, can you go back to that last page?
Yes.
Why the disparity between Butte County and Clark? Any idea there?
Well, it's a little bit relative, right? I mean, Clark had 17 students to shepherd through and get out, so that, you know, and then Clark, of course, I mean, and Butte had 20 and, and seven of them didn't graduate. You know, Butte County, gosh, I even hate to say this out loud, but it's certainly a conversation I've had with the commissioners. It's one of the most depressed counties in our region. And we're, we're looking at that. Their hospital hasn't been able to open, that's impacted employment. You know, there's, there is a farming culture that indicates that maybe you can get a GED and be just as effective. And so these seven students that dropped out, I don't know their story, but, but maybe that's the case. So I think that's, that's the disparage, disparagey. It's just, you know, it's a depressed economy. And dropout rates certainly increase in a depressed economy.
Do you think, if you had more than one year tracking here, that you'd see any great difference in those numbers?
Well, we do have that data. I just don't have it on that slide. And you, and there isn't a significant difference, no.
Okay.
Yep. I, I mean, we've gone 20 years back, so, yep. Okay, so when we talk about a knowledge-based economy and particularly the jobs that are on the horizon and the fact that when we look at the data of the projected jobs across the region in all industry, we know that 60% of those jobs will require at least a bachelor's degree. Again, another reason why that's so important. But the other thing we know is the average age of the worker in those jobs is 32-years-old. So why does that matter? Because let's look at this data. So again, this is one of the issues in Eastern Idaho. So in Silicon Valley, 40% of the population is between the ages of 25 and 44. 39% in North Carolina, 30% in Salt Lake, and in Eastern Idaho, only 21% of our population falls between 25 and 44.
Thinking that's older, most of our population would be.
I'll tell you, most of our population is under the age of 21 and older than, older than 55. We're weighted on the ends. So what it tells us is this is a great place to have children and raise a family, get your education, and it's a great place to come back and retire, but in those wage-earning years, they're leaving us.
You're exporting.
And that's a big issue.
Yes. We have an export economy in talent. So the question is, how do we turn that export economy into an import economy? We certainly have the facilities to educate our kids. We clearly don't have the jobs to keep them. So this is another indicator of a knowledge-based economy and their, their ability to succeed. You can see that an international airport is essential because most of these economies require some element of travel. You don't have to have an international airport to be successful, but you do have to have connection to an international airport to be successful. And I think both Pocatello and Idaho Falls are working on that. But we are far from where we need to be. And this transportation issue is large. We just lost a company. We just lost a company that went to Leighton, Utah. And why did they go? So I sat down with them. What can we do to keep you here? Why did you go? They say, because on any given day, we have seven salesmen in the air, on any given day. And we can fly to Atlanta from Salt Lake for $350. It's $850 out of Idaho Falls or Pocatello. So you do the math. We've got to address this issue. The other is connectivity. So when we talk about Silicon Valley and the ability to have a CEO there, work from a mountaintop, it's all true. They could do it. But they stay in Silicon Valley and they stay in Silicon Valley even though it's expensive and the migration rate out is not nearly as high as people think it is. The reason they stay is because the network economy is there for them. They have the workforce they need, they have the connectivity they need. And so if we don't address fiber to the home, and that's what it's going to take, it's not about broadband and it's not about internet. It's about fiber to the home. And we do not have fiber to, to the home in Eastern Idaho, except in one community. And you can see the cost in Silicon Valley and the Triangle, you're right around the $50 mark, but in the one community in Eastern Idaho that has it, it's $9.99 to the home. So that's an issue that every one of.
What's the one community that has?
Ammon.
Ammon?
Mm-hmm. Yep. But that is, that is an issue that we have got to address and we've got to address, we've got to understand broadband and the middle mile. I know that this is a priority of Governor Little's office. I think it's going to be kicked to Commerce, to, to Tom Keely to try to, to deal with, but it's definitely something that every one of our communities in Eastern Idaho needs to be engaged in because it will be, this is what they need, more than water, sewer, all of the things that used to be the traditional sighting. This is now the number one thing. All right. So just really quickly, because I know I'm about out of time, but I want to talk to you about the impact of the small modular reactor on the desert. And I want to talk to you about some of the numbers and what that means. So $2.4 billion to build the small modular reactor. We have gone through those numbers and we have identified that $1.2 billion of that $2.4 is up for grabs for Eastern Idaho if we have the right contractors, if they are registered as federal contractors, if they will do what it, what they need to do to be ready and prepared to play in this space. So that's part of why we had the NIC Conference in May to bring all of those potential contractors to the table, to help them understand what they will need to do to be in a position to play for some of these dollars. Now, this endeavor is divided into two sections. There's the construction phase and the operation phase. During the construction phase, that's a four-year period. Okay? So starting in 2021. And these jobs will be available during that four-year period, but then it will cease. So the direct, indirect, and induced jobs up for grab during the construction phase, 300, or 3,356. And of course, cumulative, over the four-year phase, there's 13,000 jobs plus available during the construction period. That is a huge economic disruptor for Eastern Idaho. What's the labor income up for grabs during that period of time? Annually, 161,644 million over the course of those four years. course of those four years. So those are dollars that will be paid out to people in eastern Idaho that hopefully will then be spending those dollars in the eastern Idaho economy somewhere. This is big, and this is all in this report, which we'll be sending to you and to your mayor, or to you, Mayor Blythe, sorry, for you to go through as well. During the operation period, now, these jobs are ongoing. So this will, these jobs will be ongoing for the forty-to-sixty-year life of the facility. And so we, we know that there's six hundred and sixty-seven jobs that will continue to repeat over the forty-to-sixty-year period. Now, these jobs are just to operate the small modular reactor. We recognize that this is a first-in-kind technology, and that we'll be on the forefront of that. And there's a whole set of jobs available with regard to CTE training, with regard to training people how to use the small modular reactor. We haven't even looked at those, we don't, we haven't even put those in the indirect and induced job bracket yet. We don't even know what that looks like. So the potential is even far greater than the six hundred and sixty-seven jobs annually. And then annually, the labor income would be forty-seven million dollars that you'd see paid out to workers in eastern Idaho over the forty-to-sixty-year life of the facility. This is the state and federal tax implications. And during the operation period, two point nine million annually, so every year that it's in operation, that comes back to our state and local. So if you have a contractor based in Pocatello, you have the potential to, to capture some of those dollars. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. And like I said, this is the first time that we've actually put numbers to it. It is a huge economic disruptor. It's something we want to be prepared for, and it's something we want to support. And there is going to be a public hearing period for this, for their NRC certifications. It will be important that U.S. council members weigh in on that. So that's my presentation, and I guess, Brian, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to take a moment. I know that there is some concern about the value of Ready and your, the money that you put in. And I want to allay those concerns, because I feel like this is an investment in time. And so I, I recognize that it is an investment in dollars, but it is also an investment in time. And the return on that investment is that that information that this allows you to have and then use to make decisions is appropriate. And so I would, I would, I would issue my professional and personal recommendation here to stay the course. I, I recognize that you, that it may seem as if it is arbitrary, that maybe you can't tangibly get the results, but I think you can see from the work that's been done under Dana's direction, and, and as we move forward as an organization, I feel very strongly that we're headed in the right direction. I do want to be mindful that, that as an organization, it took them a little time to get their feet under them. And I feel like as, as a representative of the city, part of my responsibility on the board, and now with the mayor on the board, on the executive board, I think we're making those changes, and I think under Dana's leadership, we've started to make those changes so that the organization has the right direction. It is on a, it is on those three legs of the stool that sets it to be a powerhouse, and to really represent the region in a way that, as a city or as individual cities, you're not going to have the capacity to reach. And so I would leave those remarks with you.
Question. Do you have any kind of distribution of jobs from INL across the various counties of eastern Idaho?
I do. And I wish, I actually, I didn't bring it with me, but I can send that information to you. I have it broken down by city. I can tell you exactly how many employees you have, federal employees you have in your city.
I would be interested in that also.
Happy to send that data to you. Yep.
On the five target areas you had for industry, tourism didn't show up, but tourism always is between number three and number one in Idaho. It's right now number three. With Yellowstone Park in our backyard, Raiders of the Moon, you know, right here in eastern Idaho, why is tourism not on that as a targeted?
Because the data, it's targeted, but the data doesn't manifest that it rises to the top. So we'll have that in the, in the strategic plan, but you'll be able to see exactly how many people are employed in that, in that industry, and it, it doesn't rise to the top as one of the major employers. And that's the criteria. Who are the major employers?
So you surveyed all of southern, southeastern Idaho?
All of eastern Idaho.
All of eastern Idaho.
Yep, using the NAICS codes and using location quadrants as well. So we have a pretty good indication of, I mean, we have, we've captured, some of our data isn't perfect, because private industry has to register with the Secretary of State, but they don't have to divulge all of their information. So it's really as simple as a phone call. And some don't play, you know? Some say, well, we'll give you an estimate, but we won't give you the exact number. So we have to, we have to, there is some margin of error because of that.
Yeah, I think in the other slide, it showed that Pocatello had that showing up as a statistic of employment.
Yes, that's because I captured, yes, I.
Thirty-eight hundred, I think, or something like that.
But still not, yeah, but still not a major employer across the region. Doesn't compete with, with energy, or healthcare, or agriculture.
Well, agriculture is not our number one.
It is actually, Bannock County's number one. No, it's actually the number one industry in Bannock County.
Yeah, but I just, I, I don't know how state figures could get tourism so high in eastern Idaho with these two national parks in our background, and so much of the state being given to federal lands, it doesn't come out higher.
Well, I think it's all in how the data's collected, right? And so a lot of it has to do with, what's the point of contact? So is the tourist attraction in your facility, or are you, you're capturing the accommodations on your way to the attraction? We don't own any of the attractions that you're talking about. So that's, that's the difference. Where Boise, Boise is a destination. I mean, they, they have the data to support that Ada County is a destination in tourism. Eastern Idaho struggles to meet that distinction, that we're actually a destination spot. Yep.
Any other questions? Heidi and then Linda.
Yeah. I first wanted to say thank you for your presentation. I enjoyed having that information provided to us, so thank you for that. At one of our latest meetings with our university president, our new president, Kevin Satterley, he brought up a lot of the same things that you have indicated in your presentation as far as graduating with an associate's and things like that. And so I was just curious what your conversations have been with ISU, or if you've had any with, with him, or how that's going.
Well, I'll tell you that President Satterley is a big supporter of regionalism, I think partly because of his background. He understands the necessity for it. And, and so we are collaborating with ISU on several projects for workforce development. And we're, and we're swapping data and talking all the time about, you know, what is the disconnect? It's like, it's like this, we know that they are educated here, but then they leave. Where are they going? They're providing us that data. They're, they're right now, you know, pooling their graduate rates and saying, where, where did these kids end up being placed? How many stayed in eastern Idaho? And if, and the ones that didn't stay in eastern Idaho, where'd they go? And why did they go there? So we can understand it better.
So do you see from your conversations, is it more of just, we want to know that? Or is there something specific that?
I think we want to know it, and then we want to understand how to change it. So I know one of the things that, that President Satterley's working on right now is changing, like, the nuclear engineering program that has been a staple at ISU, but for some reason hasn't necessarily fed the national laboratory. So why? And, and what do we need to change? What in the program needs to be changed to make that the go-to university?
Okay.
Yep.
And I have a couple of very specific questions about the small modular reactor.
Don't get too technical.
Project. No, it's money, basically. My understanding, I mean, you mentioned that it's a commercial venture, but my understanding is that being housed, if you will, at, at INL, that, that did require some federal funding for the research part and the development part. And I know Representative Simpson was very in favor of getting that funding. It wasn't in the original budget, but has that funding been secured? I mean, is there money? Are we getting federal money?
Yeah, so you're right on. So remember that the small modular reactor is really twelve reactors in one, right?
Right, it's not one.
Right, and so the first two modules are built, are going to be built by the federal government, and that, those dollars have been secured, so that.
They have been. Okay.
Well, and let me say that last budget cycle, the hundred million was there. It is proposed for this budget cycle, but of course, no budget has been approved, so.
And then my second question is also money-related, but the idea is if these get up and running, they will provide power and maybe a tiny bit of that to Idaho Falls, to Bonneville County, but the majority is, it's UAMs, and it's going to Utah. So in terms of the economic impact, how much of it is, you know, we have the project here, or we have some of the downsides here, but the power goes to another state?
There is a significant portion. So it's thirty-six different members throughout Montana, Utah, Idaho, that are all part of UAMs. And they will benefit from the power generated, as will the national laboratory, because it'll allow them to go off the grid. And they're essentially off the grid anyway with the microgrid, but this would allow them to secure that standing as well. But that's, the, the power, the power impact isn't really where we see the economic impact. Where we see the economic impact is in the property taxes. Where we see the economic impact is in the workers, the labors, that, the jobs that live and work and spend their money in eastern Idaho.
And that was kind of a second part of that question, was are they seeing most of their workers as being hired from this area, that they would not bring them in from these other places where the power would be going?
Right, so I would go back to this slide and point out that, whoops, that one right there. Again, two point four billion, right? But it's the one point two billion that we're focused on that has the potential to land in eastern Idaho. And that comes through labors, that comes through materials, that comes through contractors, that comes through, in particularly in the construction phase, you know, those, of course, those workers will either be local, and if they position themselves, should be local, or they will be imported in and be here for the course of four years, and be living and working in our, in our community. And then, of course, through the operation phase, you know, when we look at, the, these, these workers, the six hundred and sixty-seven workers, and this forty-seven million dollars annually, will absolutely be local.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions, in particular, to Pocatello. And you say that technology is one of the top industries at the moment. How do you see Pocatello in that picture? Like, how do we intersect with that, that and energy as well?
Yeah, so we actually have that data and can show you how many, I can pull it up, but in the interest of time, I won't, but how many tech companies you actually have in Bannock County. Bonneville County leads in that demographic. You lead in advanced manufacturing. So there's definitely potential for an increase in, in technology companies in Pocatello, but that's not the trend that we're seeing at the moment.
And where do you see the trend for Pocatello?
Well, the trend really is in advanced manufacturing. That's where you, and agriculture, you still are at the top for, and, and education, actually, when you bring in education and you, and you bring in not just the induced, the supporting elements of the education industry, but all the professors, and all the teachers, and all of your school district workers, that rises to the top as well.
And now, did you have, I'm sorry, did you have any data on the vocational degrees or?
We do. Yeah, I didn't share it with you, but we do, and that will all be included in.
Do you think that's, I think, I think that's an important element for our particular region? Is that, is that a significant difference?
It's very important, but I would all, I mean, I say this everywhere I go, but, you know, I would just point out that technical degrees, first of all, a thirty-eight percent go-on rate, that just means for any kind of post-secondary education, that's not just a bachelor's degree, that's any kind of post-secondary education. But I would tell you this, that our technical programs are full to capacity and expanding. We don't have a stigma in eastern Idaho about technical degrees. And you hear that sometimes. People say, well, you can't tell kids, every kid has to have a bachelor's degree, because everybody doesn't have, you're right, everybody doesn't have to have a bachelor's degree. But we don't have any problem getting kids into our technical degrees. We do have a problem getting our kids into a bachelor's degree.
Yeah, my experience at ISU is it's exactly that. I mean, it's the opposite of what a lot of people think, that there's this sort of privileging of, you know, academic bachelor's degrees and academic programs over the technical at ISU. I think it's exactly the opposite of that.
So I would just, my parting words would just be this, that, oh, sorry, you had a question.
When you talk energy, are we looking at alternative energy too, like solar and?
We are.
And winds and stuff.
And biomass, and, and actually, fascinatingly enough, eastern Idaho really dabbles in just about every form of renewable energy. And so that's one of my personal estimations, although the data doesn't exactly support it, but I see the potential for the future, that really eastern Idaho should be the energy capital of the world, because we have such diversity in our portfolio. We have hydroelectric, we have, we have everything, and we should be the testbed for any kind of energy.
Got a great environment for it.
And some of the alternative energies, other than nuclear, really work better with hydroelectric energy. The wind turbines, for example, solar, it's easier to open the valve up if, if it's an overcast day, or if the wind's not blowing. So, you know, you get your hydro up right away. I mean, it's instantaneous, and any other type of generation that increased capacity takes a while to get it online.
Well, and there's also the natural gas factor that we can't ignore, and the price of natural gas is so cheap. So part of it's just the diversification of.
Even natural gas, if you have a lull, you know, against the demand, there's a period of time, it takes a while to get your generator up. Where hydroelectric, wind turbines, solar, they really work with each other better than the other, because if one lags, then the hydro can, can kick in real fast.
I think you know way more than I do about this.
I have left my business card with my personal cell phone number. If you have questions beyond what you, how I represent the city, or anything that, that may have come up, if you have a question you need to ask, please reach out to me and be happy to. I would much rather you have more information and less confusion, and a, a strong certainty that we're on the right path.
Well, and I would just mention in closing that, and I, and Mayor Blythe can second this, and perhaps you should have a conversation about the executive board meeting yesterday, but, you know, I think we are at a crossroads. And personally, I feel like, look, if the support's not there, then the dollar should go somewhere else. And, and I think those are the decisions that you have to make, but it would be, it would be beneficial if you made them sooner than later, because I think, you know, how we maneuver in the immediate future determine, is based along on your decisions.
Super. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Drive safe.
Thank you.
That, counsel, before we move to gen item number seven, we will go ahead and take a short break. Counsel, we'll go ahead and get started again. Let's look, we're ready. Thank you for joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and get started with the gen item number seven, is Idaho Gold Star Family Memorial Monument. Idaho Gold Star Family's memorial monument committee members and other representatives will show, will share their vision and propose, and propose options for a memorial monument to be placed on future city-owned property in the North Gate Development. The committee will provide counsel with information on the proposed project and are seeking any other input and/or direction by the council, the council may have. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, good morning. My name is Rebecca Webb, and I'm chair, chairperson of the Idaho Gold Star Family Memorial Monument Committee. I am a Gold Star mom, and I just wanted to hold you all thank you so much for allowing us to come today and share our project with you. I sincerely appreciate it. We're working with several local businesses right now to help make this monument a reality in Idaho and in our city, in the city of Pocatello. Ken Pappy is here. He's with Portnet Development, and he is generously donating land for this monument to sit on. Thank you, Ken. We're also working with Walker Monument to do the monument. They're one of the preferred providers, and they will also be doing some of their granite features of the plaza that we want to incorporate. We're working with Gray Communications to help with our public outreach and media campaign. And Ted Booth is a committee member. He is designing, helping to design the monument. We also have Jared Lusk from Construction Services, and he's going to be involved in the construction part of it. And then several other committee members, and I think I included a list of who all is involved in this. So our agenda is just a brief welcome. I'd like to show a video, and then Ted will speak, Ken will speak. And something that I would also appreciate at the end is any input, any advice or direction that the city can give us. We would be very grateful for your support. I know that I was just talking with Ken too. grateful for your support. I know that, I was just talking with Ken too, if the city decides to go forward and support this project. Ray would like to put out a letter to help in our fundraising effort, and we're hoping that we could get the signatures of the council members and the mayor of Pocatello on Jupac, and perhaps even the governor of the state of Idaho. This is a monument for all of the state. One of the features, and I'm sure Ted will explain, is a circle of 44 stars that will represent every county in the state of Idaho. Also, an Indian feather for every recognized tribe in the state of Idaho. There is military loss in every county. All of us have suffered military loss. And although this monument is in Pocatello, we want it to be Idaho's monument.
Rebecca, one question. What is the overall cost of this project going to be?
Well, our overall cost, in talking with Jared, the basic monument and plaza is around $100,000, but we're looking at, our cost would be $250,000, maybe a little bit more. We've incorporated more features in our plaza.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi. My name is Rebecca Webb, and I'm here to tell you about a project I'm working on. I'm currently working with the Herschel Woody Williams Medal of Honor Foundation to bring a Gold Star Families Memorial Monument to the state of Idaho. Woody is a World War II veteran. He's a Medal of Honor recipient. He fought in the Battle of Yelena. And I met Woody in, well, last summer, in June, at the National American Gold Star Mothers Convention. I met Woody and his grandson, Chad Graham, and they shared with me their vision, and their vision is to bring one of these memorials to every state in our nation. And I came out from meeting Woody, just really feeling inspired and wanting to bring this memorial to the state of Idaho. Woody's vision was to remember the fallen, to remember their sacrifices, but also remember the families of the fallen, and to remember the burden that they most intimately bear, and the loss that they carried with them their entire lives. I think this memorial project will be healing for Gold Star Families. I think it will offer them hope and comfort, knowing that their fallen heroes and their fallen sons and daughters are not forgotten. I'm a Gold Star Mom. I lost my son, Master Sergeant Christopher Webb, in June 2017. Chris was my hero. Chris was tall, he was beautiful, he was a type A personality to go to by for everybody. He was always willing to lend others a helping hand. And I will forever miss my son. But I think my son would be supportive of this project. I see him standing by my side and encouraging me and saying he got this mom. There is a very talented, a wonderful group of individuals that have come together to help make this project a reality and bring it to our state. And I'm very grateful to each and every one of them. And I'm really hopeful that if I carry the torch and I champion this cause, that others will decide to carry this torch too, and establish memorials in their state. And also, maybe somebody else in the state of Idaho will want to bring a memorial to Idaho, or Central Idaho. And I've just been so encouraged by the generosity and the support that we've received from everyone. Central to this memorial is head out of a soldier saluting. And that soldier saluting is honoring and remembering our fallen sons and daughters. It's the most important part of the memorial to me. And it's very visible. And I, I'm just so excited to bring this memorial to the state of Idaho. I hope that you'll decide to help support this project. If you, if you would like to support this project, I'd really encourage you to go to the Herschel Woody Williams Medal of Honor Foundation and click on their website, and you can find information about our project and our memorial there.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Ted Booth, Booth Architecture. And Rebecca asked me to get involved with this, and it's actually an honor to work with this and honor our military and our Gold Star Families. What we have been working with is some of the parameters that we have to design the monument around. Some things, there are very little leeway on the apartments just designed. This comes with it, and we designed the site around it. Been working with Ken up at North Gate and decided that they have a great area that we could, we could place this. We have an idea of what we want the monument to look like. We have an idea of where it would go within the North Gate community. There's still a little bit of wiggling as, as time goes on, but I think that we have the, the general monument and so forth designed, and we can cross those paths. Now, we, this is the overall area. It is, I think Merrill can zoom in on another section. It's really close to, if you move your cursor right in, yeah, right there, and then he can pop to the next slide.
You want to add all the, the Chris's?
Or to the, or to the next slide of Chris's, or to the other. So, this is the area. There will be a parking lot off of the area, and then there will be a walk which, which leads to our monument. The monument will be of, of concrete and granite and so forth. And hopefully, this will turn into a park, something that the city could, could support and would be part of a, a, a city maintained area. And that's something that, that Ken can hit on a little bit. The next slide is, yeah, it doesn't matter. This is just a really quick rendition of what we had planned. We, we have the monument there. We have a concrete circle around it. The star in the center would be of granite from Walker Monument. Then we have 44 stars going around the perimeter, which would be of granite. That represents the 44 counties. We have the four feathers going around, which represent the, the four reservations. And then we, we have all of the, the flags around as well. This is shown in, in grass, but I understand probably zero scape in.
Yep.
Up there.
There are five, right?
Yes, we are, we, there are five. He said four, but we found out there are five.
Right. We have, we have four drawn on. There is a, a fifth, and we haven't placed that on this.
I know that we'll be working with a landscape architect, and I do think that we will need some area of green around the side, in case we have a big gathering, say during Memorial Day or Veterans Day. We don't want people standing out in the sagebrush, but we do want to incorporate zero scape in the landscaping too.
Sure. This is just a couple more views of this. How the walk leads into it were, is, is still a discussion, and part of that will be once we, once we get the rest of the, the parking and how it's actually going to lie in there, the contours and whatever, it'll be ADA accessible. And then we'll also have some other monuments, educational, talking about what a, what a Gold Star is, what Gold Star Family is, and a little bit about the, the stars, the feathers and so forth. And a little bit educational, we'll have some granite benches around it as well.
And I think the, the benches, in this illustration, they appear kind of gray or brownish, but I think we might do them in black. We just had that discussion the other day, and it looked really striking.
Been working with Jared of Construction Services, and he has contacted Walker Monuments. They're on, they're on board. So Rebecca's already been beating the streets, looking for funding and so forth. And I think she's going to get a lot of good support. Pocatello's a very patriotic community, and they, I think it'll be well, well received. Just want to put it out there for the city.
I'm Ken Papi, Portnet Development. Good morning, Mayor and Councilman members. We're, Portnet Development and the JV is honored to put this up there. When they come to us, we'd done other monuments, Chief Pocatello, me and my little brother, when we saw this, we didn't even hesitate to do it. We had a couple of locations, and I talked with Chris, our surveyor engineer, and that the walking path is going to go right by it, fit perfectly in there. On the, it's almost a half an acre we're looking at. Don't tell, I get with Chris and nail it down actually how much acreage is in there. And on the, on the building of the monument and all that, I, we have quite a bit of people donating, doing the asphalt, the landscaping, the lighting. Rebecca's got quite a few of the flag poles. She's got more people. So a lot of it's already been funded from the lighting, irrigation. I got manufacturers stepping on board, Parsons. You would not believe how many people are putting this together. So the only thing that we're looking at is taking this acreage, very little landscaping, and turn it into a park for the city, for everybody enjoying. Because we got the walking path going right through, and going right to the wellness center. So they get a lot of visibility. Right by the ravine, you actually can see it from the freeway. So we even went to another step. We even named the street Gold Star. So it's for the veterans. It's for all of us. And we're not going to hesitate to help. So we donated the land, whatever it takes to put this together. Our little group says, Pat and Nathan, absolutely, we're going to do this. So any support that I can give from the city, you know, to make it into a park and that, would be awesome.
Ken, I'll just say, it's a no-brainer to me. So thank you for taking the leadership on this. And Rebecca, thank you.
You're welcome.
For, for your leadership on this one.
Mr. Mayor, one comment?
Absolutely.
I would recommend that in the fundraising, there be some perpetu- perpet-
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity.
Yes.
I see all of those flags. And so frequently, when something's turned over to someone like the city, we do not have the funds to replace those. So I hope there are enough funds left that we can keep the flags.
Yes. And that's one of the things that we're going to have to put in the program, that the flags are, you know, because of the wind and that, they're going to get damaged. And so we don't want to put the burden on the taxpayers. So it'd be constantly fundraising to keep the flags. Just like the lighting's got to be perfect, LED lighting on the American flag that's going to fly 365 days a year, around the clock. So we got to be prepared to change out those flags all the time. But it's something for everybody to enjoy. I'm just grateful to have it up there, have it in this Pocatello. This is where it needs to be.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I would say too, to address your question, so we worked through the Herschel Woody Williams Medal of Honor Foundation. They're a 501(c)(3), and one of their recommendations is that we raise above and beyond the cost of the memorial, and we have that in a trust for anticipated ongoing costs, like you mentioned, flag replacement, or maybe damage, you know, if there's some small damage to the memorial. And so that is in our plans, to maybe have $20,000 at least in a trust that we can draw on to replace those. I know up on that area of town, there's a lot of wind. And Sam Nettenga has been helping to facilitate, facilitate this project. And I know you all know him. And he mentioned that they're replacing up at the map two to three times a year. And so we've kind of anticipated what would be the cost of the flag, how many would we need to replace a year, and what type of funding will we need to put into a trust to take care of that.
And even just maintenance of the granite, our, our climate, wind and snow and rain, I mean, it's tough on, at the cemetery. You know, we do some voluntary community gravestone cleanings, particularly veterans' gravestones. And it's amazing, the damage that gets done over time, and not that long of a time. So just some-
Exactly.
Funds for maintenance and cleaning and.
I think that's important, cleaning too, because we want this monument to look nice. We know it will be in a construction area for a few years, but I think down the road, it will be absolutely beautiful. The soldier will be saluting towards the American flag and towards the west and towards the setting sun, which will be really nice. Any funds that we raise for the monument and plaza itself, that it, that we take in above what we need for maintenance and that trust fund, will actually go to the Herschel Woody Williams Medal of Honor Foundation to help establish other monuments across the country. And also, they kind of fill in the gap. They help provide scholarships to the children of weekend soldiers. The, you know, if you're full-time in the military or you're in a war zone, they're taken care of when they lose their, their mom or their dad. But the weekend soldiers, they may deploy and come back, and then they're a weekend soldier. And so the way that they're taken care of by the military is a little bit different. And so the Herschel Woody Williams Foundation helps to fill, fill the gap in that area. And then to also educate the public about military loss.
When it, when it comes to cleaning, like Chief Pocatello, Pat's been out there doing a lot of that. They have that funds aside. So they, Sam calls up Pat, "Pat, you need to refurbish the concrete out there, make it brand new again." You know, we got the sprinklers that's off there, it's watering and all that. And they had the monument place, don't come out there and clean that monument, take a little bit of acid and wipe it down because of hard water, because you get it on the air and that. So they had to set up a program for that cleaning and maintaining that. So it ain't a burden on taxpayers. So we, that's why we'll help and set, and set it up the way it should be set up. So.
And the exact design and the exact location, still wiggling a little bit.
Yep.
And once that's finalized, we would, we would come back and see if there's any other issues.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we give tentative approval to the city's support of this marvelous concept, and that we lend the resources of the city and whatever is necessary to bring this project to completion, subject to legal review, and all of those other nice things that need to be on that motion.
Do we need to have it as part of the other things, both through work through our Parks Director to hash out details, or through, I don't know if the committee needs to have it back again or what?
They can put it in the committee, and I think what you do is accept it on behalf until they put the final program together to show you guys, like they did at the Chief Pocatello, when they dedicated that. Because we're shooting for dedication on August 31st to be completely dedicated this year.
We're not putting that out yet, though.
Right.
Newsflash, it just went out.
But usually, it takes about two to three years to put these together, built, since they gone. So this is a fast track, because we want Pocatello and State of Idaho to be recognized right now. We don't want to be like everybody else.
Okay, we have a motion.
Heidi, that's why the tentative.
Yes.
Because there's much to be done.
Motion by President Johnston, Johnston, and a second by Lyric. Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Super. Thank you.
Need to point out that Sam Nettenga's sister is here.
Yes.
She was on our committee too.
Well, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm really, I'm really grateful.
It's going to be, it's going to be neat. It'll be a great asset to our community. So thank you.
I think so. Thank you.
We'll move on to Gen Item Number Eight. It's Foregolf Reimbursement Request. John Banks and Recreation, John Banks, Recreation Director, will discuss current billing status and revised reimbursement request for Foregolf in the amount of $28,801.90. Foregolf was awarded the concessions agreement for the city of golf courses on October 15, 2015.
Sorry about that. Good morning, Mayor Blatt and Councilmembers. John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I'm here today to follow up to a request letter from Foregolf dated December 26, 2018, and a revised request letter to Council dated February 6. Staff has had an opportunity to meet with Cindy Robbins in Utility Billing to review the items noted in the December 26 letter, and was able to get clarification on the billing items mentioned, and also gain consensus with the Foregolf folks. items mentioned and also gain consensus with the For Golf folks. As a result, and is brought forward in a revised February 6th letter, For Golf is requesting if council would consider a more current reimbursement of the remaining break repair expenses incurred. These were granted by council at the October 4th, 2018 meeting and were due to the ongoing water delivery issues out at Riverside Golf Course for the past 15 to 17 years. The reason For Golf, for For Golf's request is that the granted reimbursements were not able to all be utilized for payment of utilities for the 2018 season. And as mentioned previous, due to the decreased play trends for the past few seasons, these resources would go a long way in helping For Golf with remaining 2018 season obligations and also would help them tremendously with 2019 season expenses, expenses, as we're waiting for the weather to clear and they can start generating revenues for the 2019 season. Just as an FYI for council, the revised request amount of just over $28,801 is the result of the original amount noted in the December 26 request, less domestic water, sewer and trash services that were billed since that time in the amount of roughly $2,150. There's no additional financial impact to the city associated with the For Golf request. Rather, it's, it would just represent a change in the timing of the remaining reimbursement and would provide some more immediate resources that would help them quite a bit as they're trying to ramp up with their operational expenses for 19 and also finish up the 18. So it's a, it's, it's not any additional impact to the city. It's basically kind of a, a difference in timing request. It sure would help them out tremendously if they could be, have access to those resources immediately. And that's kind of the gist of the request. For Golf is here if you have any specific questions of them, but in my discussions with them, I think that's a fairly accurate summary of exactly what they're requesting.
Counsel? I move we approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Cheatham. Ruth, would you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Okay, super, thank you.
Very much, Mayor and Council. And also thank you to Cindy in Utility Building. She did a great job of helping me understand everything and get, get our arms around everything. So thank you.
Super, thank you.
While our golf people are here, do we have any updates in terms of our new building at Riverside?
We'll discuss that later. It's a great question, but nice trying to sneak something through there.
I'm the agenda.
That's right, the agenda does not-
I know.
-give us that opportunity. We're gonna move to a gen item, we're moving to a gen item number nine, telecommunications funding proposal. Pocatello Police Department staff is seeking council support to present information to Bannock County Commissioners regarding the existing intergovernmental agreement for the ambulance district, specifically referring to the funding of one-third of the telecommunications center's staff as outlined in the agreement.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My, my name's Major Roger Schein, the Deputy Chief with the Pocatello Police Department. We're here today to talk in reference to funding for the ambulance district for some dispatchers.
Do we need to be worried where you're from, the biggest guys?
Probably not. They're, they're kinda soft-hearted a little bit. So they're tender. Don't let their size intimidate you. Let me go ahead and get this opened up here. What she's handing out right now is basically this PowerPoint presentation. One of the slides is blown up a little bit more so you can see the actual numbers and then a copy of the ambulance district contract itself. So. So you know that our dispatch center, we take care of all the police for the city of Pocatello, all the fire for the city of Pocatello and all of the ambulance calls for the entire Bannock County. It's housed inside the Pocatello Police Department. We provide all the, all of the equipment for them and we provide those three services. So. All right. So, so you know, this is the total number of calls that dispatch has received. Now, the number of calls that are up there under the law only miscellaneous don't really accurately affect actually how many calls come in that dispatch center. We had a gentleman that called in the other night to, one of our locals that calls in quite often to ask how he is a citizen, could apply for the Chief of Police. So they get often phone calls in there that don't relate and they don't control who calls in there. So they actually, last year, they received 106,000 calls and change in the dispatch center itself. And that could be somebody from an emergency to somebody asking for directions to the death rates. So, or to send plot names. So they, they receive a lot of those generated dispatch calls. This doesn't include officer initiated stuff. It's 25,000 for law only miscellaneous is 538. Fire and EMS calls was 8,081 for a total amount of documented report calls of 34,434. So they're, we're doing a lot in the, in the dispatch center and a lot of it has to do with fire and EMS. So some of the things that, that we'd like to talk about here is where are those calls going? Well, it's in 18, 6,229 of those calls were within the city of Pocatello. North Bannock County had 1,537, South Bannock County had 293. So that's the breakdown of where, where are the, where's our EMS services going? And that, that's where they're, they're going. But all, all of those are within Bannock County, 100% of those are within Bannock County. When you look at the percentages of the amount of calls, of the, of the amount of calls that are in there for, last year was 23.4%, 24.85 in 17 and 23.25 in 2016. So about 25% of what they do for call wise in there is EMS related. Now, when you look at that, a fire call and an EMS call, generally an EMS call, I'm gonna focus on EMS, it takes a lot longer because they're all on the phone with someone providing cardiac instructions for CPR or something a little more lengthy. And I brought Stephanie Harris, one of our early dispatchers here to, she's gonna explain some of the, these books and flip charts here on what they actually do in there. So is there any questions on that, on the last couple of slides? So along with the, the percentage of the EMS calls that are handled in the dispatch, there's some additional duties that we have to do. Since we handle ambulance, we're required, well, we're doing EMD training, which is emergency medical dispatch. What that requires is 24 hours of initial training and 24 hours of training every two years. So they have to continually do that. On top of that, Post just mandated that the dispatchers do 40 hours of training every two years for IDAP rule. So they have to do additional training on top of that to stay certified. And that's specific to EMS and dispatching ambulances. We've also have several protocols that are implemented. We're, right now, we're up to 38. Protocol 38 is an example of if a law enforcement officer goes on a call and there happens to be a emergency, medical emergency that they didn't know about. So they will call in the dispatch requesting an ambulance and they, they implement this protocol. So Stephanie, if you could talk a little bit about Protocol 38 and kind of what that entails?
Protocol 38, back up just a little bit. EMD is a system that allows the dispatchers to bridge the gap between the response and the care that the patient gets. Protocol 38 was set up so that when law enforcement does arrive on scene, they can provide us with a scripted pieces of information that they collect so that we're able to go in, enter them into the system so that Emergency Response Services has the ability to make the correct decisions to respond with the appropriate apparatus. It allows the correct apparatus with the correct amount of EMS individuals on it, whether we're sending an advanced life support and an injun or just an advanced life support ambulance to the scene. That is Protocol 38. The other protocols that we work with when we are working with the EMD protocols is that, I brought an example and I do have some small books that if you would like to do that. We have the choice, once we take the actual call, we're scripted with questions to make sure that we have the correct, right off the bat, the address to make sure that we can get the appropriate response to them as quickly as possible. We go through the questions and what this is, is this allows us to provide the highest level of patient care for the individuals within our community. This allows us to go through and ascertain the correct information that we need to determine the correct response. It allows us also to go through and to provide post dispatch instructions and also pre-arrival instructions. It allows us to have the training to go through that I can do CPR, I can teach someone or walk someone through how to do AED, give a Narcon shot to hit an EpiPen, I can deliver a baby, I can walk through a stroke diagnostic card to help the EMS crews determine what type of medications are going to be needed when they arrive at the hospital. It is a very, some will say it's a long process, but it actually falls within the national standards from the time of call to the dispatch. One of the, in things that we do, it does take longer, it appears to take longer because we may be on the phone longer. However, as we're going through the protocols and asking the questions, it does not delay the response of the ambulance because while we're going through these questions, we're entering it in the computer, we're also dispatching out the ambulance at the same time.
I'm really grateful for that explanation. I wondered how you could do it all. That's good.
And like I said, I do have the books, the training and we can walk through the protocols. There are rules, there's called axioms that we have to know that we're going through. As we're actually taking the call and I'm asking the questions, they're different based on the answers that they give me. There are, there's medical information that on there that allow me to make the correct decisions so that I can put that into the computer so that when the ambulance is dispatched out, they have that information on their call, they can look at that, they can see exactly what they're doing from the age to the conditions to their breathing status, to their conscious levels and other medical conditions or challenges that we face. It also addresses any type of safety measures that EMS crews and fire crews may encounter when they get there. And it allows me to make the decision whether or not I need to, we call it stage the ambulance or hold them off, make them respond, hold them off and so that we can get law enforcement there.
What is your training to prepare you for this crucial position?
For dispatch or EMD?
Combination of both.
Our initial training program currently is 17 weeks. It's broken down into various different phases. Our first phase, we learn how to use the computers. There are various different computer systems that we learn to use within the system. We have, it's called CAD, it's computer aided dispatch. It's the information that we collect has databases and we use it both for fire and EMS. There is also, we are part of a records keeping process for the National Crime Investigation Computer, it's called the NCIC computer. It actually filters into the FBI system so we keep track of protection orders, warrants, both that type of information that allows us to gain information for the officers when they respond, for driving statuses, warrants, concealed weapon per, concealed weapon permits that may be from various different states. It also includes information from ICE, illegal aliens, Canada, any type of things like that. That's the first three weeks. The second three weeks that they do, they do call taking. This is where the dispatcher actually sits down with a seasoned dispatcher that has gone through a communications training program and they learn how to take calls. They're learning how to talk to the public, they're learning how to ascertain the needs of the public and what they need, asking the correct questions and learning to control your tone, develop empathy with the callers. No one calls us to tell us to have a nice day. Most of the individuals that do call us, they will say that 90% of those that call 911, it is the only time that they will ever call the police department. It is crucial that we teach the skills that when they do call into the department, that we make the experience as positive as it possibly can. We're representing not only ourselves, but it's the police department, it's the fire department and the city. So we teach them those skills in that three weeks. The next three weeks, they are fire phase and they will learn how to work the EMD cards. They learn how to dispatch the fire, the fire and the ambulances. We also dispatch, we have county ambulance, so we dispatch for Lava, Downey, Inca and the Bannock County ambulance service. We also dispatch for the Pocatello Fire Department. So those things come into play during that phase. The last fourth phase is a police phase and that is where they're only talking to police radio. That is where they're constantly, that is, they're taking the radio traffic, documenting where the officers are, running their information, gaining information regarding driver's checks, registrations and warrants. The total program is about 17 weeks. It can be extended in any type of the phases when we don't believe that an individual is performing to where we need them. Within the next year, they have to attend Post Academy. Post Academy is a 40 hour, two week, 80 hour, two week program. It's held in Boise. It is geared toward the basic dispatch and the skills that they need to fulfill the goals within the state requirements for certification and to go back into their agencies and perform their duties as they see needed. There is continuation of education that we need to have throughout the, every two weeks, we have to have 40 hours of training. That is in addition to the continued education credits that EMD as a company requires us to have to maintain our certifications with EMD.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
You've indicated 19 dispatchers. Is it a full crew?
Yeah, that's where we're currently, we're currently budgeted to have 19. We have 18 right now hired. We're seeking a, one more.
How high's your turnover rate?
We have, it, it depends on the year and it depends on if someone makes it through training. Not everybody, like a police officer, makes it through training. So we recently had a dispatcher that we had to let go because they weren't successfully completed training. So there are some dispatchers that get into it and they realize, just like we recently had a police officer do this, it wasn't for them. And they get successfully trained and they get out there in the field or they're in the CTO program, which is the training program, and they realize, this is not like it is on TV. And, and, and they say, I can't handle the stress, I can't sleep or I have nightmares or, and so they, they quit. So it's not an easy job. Being a dispatcher is not an easy job by any means. It's probably one of the hardest jobs we have because at least we get to get out there and see what's going on. They don't, all they have is a phone. So, I mean, all the stuff she told you, that's why I brought her, cause she's an expert in the field. And when being able to multitask and all that's going on is, to watch it happen is absolutely amazing. So with all that training that they have to do just for EMD, another thing they have to do is what's called Pro-QA. They have to have 24 hours of additional training for that. What Pro-QA is, it's attached to EMD. So when they go on a medical call, there's, we have six people that are trained in the dispatch center to be queues. So they have to review the call that they went on to make sure that all the protocols were met, to make sure all of the things, the policies, the procedures that are met. And I'm gonna skip ahead to another slide. Last year, we were about 60% compliant through our review for the NAC, for the standards. This year, we're at 92% compliant or 1% away from being what's called an ACertified Dispatch Center, which is like the gold star of dispatch centers. So to make those improvements is huge, to be at 92% compliant. That means we're following all the protocols and we're doing all, they're queuing their calls, they're catching things and making those course corrections when they need to. Those are, those take about two, one to two hours depending on how long the call is for them to review. Stephanie, if you could tell- Stephanie, if you could tell them a little bit more about queuing a call?
Queuing is a quality assurance program. We go in, we start, we go from start to finish through the call. We have a software program that we follow. Again, we're using the cards to make sure that the dispatcher is actually following through and asking the questions and recording the information accordingly. Because if that information is not recorded accordingly or they don't ask the question correctly, it could delay or change the response of the EMS crews. We go through, we actually listen to the call, so it's a verification that everything has been done. At the end of the process, we then get with the dispatcher, we do the coaching, we make the course corrections, review the call with them, letting them know, hey, this was good. Hey, in the future, can we change this? Your tone, we realized that they were screaming and yelling at you. Here's how you can control the call, not being rude, but other things that we can display and to use within our skills to make us a better call taker to deal with these emergencies.
Counselor Gray.
I see the thing here is, our function is to determine if our one-third request...
Correct. But the reason, and the reason I'm doing this is because I want the council to be 100% educated about the EMS portion of this before we go to the county.
Okay, so what I, what I saw was that 25% of the calls are from the county. Is that right?
Yeah, 25% of the calls that they take into the center are EMS-related.
Okay. And do we, so how do we factor the one-third as the county's load?
Okay, so if you go to the next, if the next slide, and this is your handout, page three, section five, A1. So it says, and this is the last intergovernmental agreement with the county, and it says in there specifically that the county will agree to pay for one-third first and out cost of command and support staff that directly contributes to response, operations and administration of EMS services. That's where I got the one-third from.
Okay. So it's a pre-existing agreement?
Correct. And I checked the finance currently and when I talked to Joyce, she said, out of line 35, which is where the transfer would take place, we're currently getting zero for dispatch. So the Pocatello Police Department has fully funded fire, EMS, police, dispatch. And we recently did review and we discovered that the agreement does cover that. So...
So are you guys trying to collect what you have?
Well, that's why I'm coming to the council. I need some guidance here from, from you guys on the direction you'd like me to do.
So really, you're looking for guidance if we will support you going to the county and saying, do what you agreed to and give us a third of dispatch?
Correct. So the 19 dispatchers are there, way to benefits from last year was about 1.4 million, 33% of that's 464,000. Now, I know the county probably doesn't have that to go over and say, it would be great if I went over and said, hey, could you write me a check? And they said, yes, but I highly doubt that's going to happen. So what I'd like to do is contact them, I'd like permission from you guys to go ahead, your blessing to go ahead and contact them and review this with them and begin a discussion with the county, beginning to assist with funding dispatchers. We're constantly looking for new dispatchers. In fact, we're, we're looking for new dispatchers and dispatch supervisors in the center to adequately make sure that we can do the Pro-QA stuff, the queuing the calls, because a lot of times they don't have time to do that in there because they're, they're busy and they get behind. So, and the dispatch center is nuts in there sometimes. It's just, I've been in there and Stephanie's not really herself the credit, but I've been in there when they've been on a medical call where there's a small child that is dying and attacked or situation in a barricaded sub, in a house at the same time. And to watch what they can do in there, I mean, they, they need to be adequately staffed for the safety of our community.
Is this maybe a prelude to a bigger discussion of totally, totally uniting all of the dispatch from counties and those cities? I mean, do we need to do more than what you're asking for?
Well, I think what we're doing now works. Eventually, down the road, I mean, if that's something that you guys would like to discuss with Chubbuck and the county and the funding for a building and equipment and staffing that everybody can come together and work out at, you know, if that's something that other agencies do. Right now, we do a lot of that in, within our walls of our own building. We just don't dispatch police for Chubbuck or fire for Chubbuck or police for Bannock County. They dispatch all their deputies out of that dispatch center. So, so ideally down the road, if that's a discussion that you guys would like to have and we've talked to, I've talked to Chief Gates on that a few times and that's something that is a discussion, it's on the radar map, it's just not something that's on the radar map right now because...
Let me stop you right there though. That's not what you're asking to do.
Correct.
You're asking for permission from the council, or support from the council for four, to go and approach the county and ask them for their 400, what did you flip the thing?
Oh.
$464,000.
54,000.
$64,000.
Correct.
To pay for dispatch and additional dispatchers that that would help pay for.
Correct.
To pay for the one-third.
Yes.
That's, that's the ask.
Yes.
And I don't know why we wouldn't be doing that and I don't know why we, why we have done that. What, I'll take a motion.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would like to make a motion that we instruct our department to begin the dialogue with the county and start going down the path of getting those funds.
Second.
That'll have, had 15 of you say, and there's only about four of you up here hollering. But Cheatham actually, actually beat everybody out there on that.
Before we vote, so I just need a little clarification. I'm all for this, but so when somebody dies and dials 911, does it come to Pocatello and then, or where does it go first?
Depends on where they're at, depends on where the...
Okay, so it will trigger if it's county, it goes to county, if it's Chubbuck, it goes to Chubbuck. But if their 911 call is of an ambulance nature, then do that, does Chubbuck have to route it up to you guys?
Yes.
So that's a delay in service. You know, and, or, and if somebody calls 911 for fire in Chubbuck, it goes right to them? Goes 911 for outside the city limits, does it go to the county?
Ideally.
To be honest, it depends what tower it hits off of, really. But ideally, yes, if they're in a county, they'll call 911, it'll go to Bannock County. And if they need law and EMS or fire, they may take that information and then transfer and stay on the line. Because their dispatchers don't have the EMD training, so sometimes they're not asking the right questions. So what we're asking of those other agencies is they transfer the call. Don't take the information and then give it to us. Transfer the call.
Okay, so, so we're taking some of the burden off of those services right away because that's the nature of the call. The second component, looks to me like back to Jim, it triggers the idea of one coordinated place would be better than having people making decisions. Every time you make a decision, you make, you have a chance from the states. So I would look at doing this, but also having larger conversations.
I think today, and the motion is for you to go and get that permission and we'll go and, we're going to vote on that motion in just a minute. Thank you for the clarification. Ideally, if, if you're in, geographically, if you're in Chubbuck, it goes to Chubbuck and then they route it to Pocatello. County, geographically, it should go to county and then they end up routing it to Pocatello and so.
It could go almost anywhere. It was in Salmon a few years ago, back in the country and found a car abandoned on a road. We reported it to sheriff's office, we got back to Salmon. They went and did an investigation, found a guy's body, tracked it backwards and discovered that it hit a cell tower in Salmon and bounced to Pocatello. They couldn't find the guy because of that.
Definitely some issues that are out there, but for the most part, it does what it's supposed to do and it acts the way it's supposed to. And I'm, I'm a little confused why the county, and I, I don't necessarily agree with you that we have to go and ask them and they're not just going to write us a check. They said they would write us a check in 2000, whenever this was.
16.
16. So I, I, I don't know why we started the conversation, I don't know why we wouldn't just ask, but we do have a motion. The motion was from Adamson and the second one's from Cheatham. Ruth, could you please call her on?
Yes, sir. Adamson?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Hanon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Stephanie, thank you for what you do in there.
I'm amazed.
It is.
Guys should come in and like, take a look.
Come, come, come have a seat. Love to have you.
Really? Super.
Right in here?
Yes, sir.
You just messed up. You're going to have people and they're in your way now all the time.
It's all good. I work Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Please come in, we'll have a seat, we'll do a tour and we'll run you through exactly what you do and what we offer as a dispatch center for the community.
Say I could do that easier than putting on the turnouts and planning.
Maybe so. Okay, we will move to agenda item number 10, patrol vehicle per officer plan. Pocatello Police Department staff is seeking council's direction regarding proposed vehicle per officer plan. Staff will outline the options, the long-term effects and response to calls for service under the proposed plan. If we can, if council so chooses, a master lease agreement with the, with the Bancorp to assist with the plan will be considered at a future meeting. That was a whole mouthful there, but I just want you to know, you're the only thing standing between us and lunch right now, so.
I'm sorry about that. I'll be, we'll be as quick as we can on this. Once again, I'm Major Roger Shine, Chief Pocatello Police Department. At the table, I've got Captain Cliff Kelly, Patrol Division. We also have Bob Hugo from the Bancorp here. He's the, he's the, one of the companies that we've been working with in reference to this and we've got Rich Deal in here who we've also been working with with legal. This has been a project and a desire of ours for several years, for several reasons, which we'll cover today. This is something that I believe will enhance the quality and safety of our citizens within the city of Pocatello for our response and our capabilities that we have. Captain Cliff Kelly, he worked pretty hard on this PowerPoint. I'm going to turn the PowerPoint over to him and I'll be there and I'll move the slides for him, so.
All right. In our five-year strategic plan, we have in there, the objective 2A is, and the main focus of that is continue adding vehicles to the fleet to reach the carper officer. And how did we get there? Okay, in our history, back in 2012, we had, go ahead, go there. Oh, let's, let's go to this first. Right now, we have authorized 62 patrol officers and we currently have 37 patrol vehicles. We need 25 more to get to the true carper officer, but our request for this year is 21. And what that 21 represents is we would have each of our officers from sergeant down to patrol officer would have a vehicle assigned to them. The other four are lieutenants and they work 12-hour shifts about up against each other. So we didn't think it made sense at this point to get them a carper officer through this, this mechanism that we're, we're proposing today. But in, in the history, what brought this to the fore for us is the Charlotte Fire back in 2012. Okay, we had all of our resources deployed on that and we were calling in officers and they got here to the station to get their equipment and then they sat because all of our vehicles were out being used and we couldn't get them out on the street to take the other calls for service that were happening. So there was several minutes, several hour delay because what we ended up doing is transporting them to the cars where they sat with people out at the Charlotte Fire and they were able to take those cars and go get out on the street. And that's one of the things that was identified as one of the biggest problems and needs in the debrief of that fire. The, there have been probably four or five others just this year or within the last couple of years that are, that are similar. At 4570 Navajo, we had a barricaded subject and again, many of our resources were there. We had SWAT call out. Our SWAT officers, the way it was set up, had to come in, get their gear and wait and then get out to the scene once we had the full team constituted and they go on, on the van. We've changed that somewhat, but also in order to handle those calls for service that were also coming in, we had patrol officers called in and again, it was a little bit better because we've done, taken some measures to alleviate that problem by adding other cars, but there was still that delay in, in officers getting out to the, to the scene. A 20 to 60-minute delay and when you have a critical incident like that where the people there are, could be or are in danger, we also have the, the other calls for service that need to be taken care of in the city. It's, it causes us a little bit of consternation, especially when we debrief these things and we see where our breakdowns are.
On this one here, all of our resources were deployed down at that house. Every, everybody was down, this guy was trying to leave with, with some long guns, some rifles and shotguns and there was Indian Hills Elementary School right there and he was high on several drugs and in order to stop him, we needed to contain that house and we couldn't leave. We had to make sure we had that. But meanwhile, crime and accidents and people need help, all of Pocatello still goes on. So we had to call people out and so then they have to come to the station and get their gear and get a vehicle and then deploy. We did have a couple that were able to deploy straight from their house because they had their vehicles at home. That was a huge help to have a few that could easily be deployed on that one.
Okay, and then up at the hospital, we had a subject who was threatening suicide from his car. He was in the parking lot that is adjacent to the main entrance of the hospital. So we had another SWAT call out, we had all of our resources deployed up there because if he got access to that doorway into the hospital, you know, that's something we, we couldn't allow. So all of our resources were there and again, we had a bit of a delay in, in getting officers out on the street quickly. Now, in FY18, we came to council and asked to use capital contingency funds in order to add a couple more vehicles, which was granted and we truly appreciate that. It's, it is a help. And in order to do that, and that's when we came to council, that's what we said, it was to get closer to our goal of the carper officer. Some of the reasons that we want to go with the carper officer, it's more efficient than a motor pool. Officers can take their vehicles home, they can put their equipment in their vehicles, park it at their house and they can respond directly from home to anywhere we need them in the city at a moment's notice. They're able to, well, and which also, as, as you see, it results in better service to our community because the quicker we can get our resources out there, the better off we are. Right now, we have, our current fleet is, is 35 vehicles and so what we're doing is we're rotating each of those vehicles out about every seven years. And we set a target of about 100,000 miles that we feel is a good service life for our vehicles to be in patrol and to be viable in patrol. So if we gain our, our goal here to go to the carper officer, that should lengthen that service life of each of those vehicles from about seven years to 12 years. And, and also they're, based on time value of money, it's more cost-effective to purchase all your vehicles now, okay, than, than to do them incrementally year after year. And I've got a couple of slides that, that will kind of illustrate that. As you can see, the, the top bar there is when we had 25 vehicles. When we had 25 vehicles... When we had 25 vehicles, we would put an average of 20,155 miles per vehicle, per year. And when we went, increased to 35 vehicles, that dropped to 14,396 miles. And we project, if we get the 58, get 258 vehicles, it will drop that average down to 8,688. That's how we're gonna lengthen the life of, of these vehicles. So, and that just illustrates, with the 25 vehicles, just see how that graph illustrates how you're gonna lengthen your time out from five and a half to six years to seven years and clear up to 12 years of service life. Now, one of the other reasons for taking vehicles home for the officers is there's gonna be higher visibility of the police vehicle in the neighborhoods, which is a crime deterrent in that neighborhood. If somebody's gonna commit a robbery, gonna commit burglary, and they see a police car parked in a driveway or on the street next to, in the residence or in the neighborhood where they're going to commit that crime, then they're going to be less likely to do so. And with the number of officers we have in a number of different diverse neighborhoods where they live, you're, you're getting that value all across the city. And one of the other benefits to it, it's an incentive for us to retain officers and to recruit new officers, because if they know, I'm gonna be assigned a vehicle, I'm going to have that to take my gear home, to be able to respond, to, to have that benefit, it is a big recruiting point, and it, it's a big retention point as well.
The individual officer having his vehicle, is he more responsible than he would be right now for the care and maintenance of that car?
Uh, yes, and for the care of it, absolutely, and for it, to get it into, get the, the vehicle checks and, and the, the maintenance done. We wouldn't put the burden of, hey, you gotta pay for the oil changes and things like that on them, but, but yeah, the, the care of the vehicle is up to them, and they need, would need to pay attention to that schedule.
And this has all been run through our central?
Yes.
Yes, we've talked, we've talked to fleet, and, and to answer your question, the accountability, I think, is what you were asking about. Yes, absolutely, accountability for the officers would increase. You wouldn't have officers sharing cars and officers, you know, someone just randomly grabbing a car and driving it. If it's assigned to that officer, they're accountable for that vehicle.
Yeah. And actually, in talking to fleet, they also pointed out how the maintenance costs would drop with the car per officer. And what we have now is we have several vehicles that are newer, that by year, there are 16, 17s, and 18 vehicles who, that are under warranty currently by year. But the mileage is so high, we have a 2017 that's got almost 30,000 miles on it. So the warranty is three years, 36,000, and we've gotten through one and a half years, and it's almost out of warranty. If we extend that and we have the car per officer, these vehicles will be under warranty for the full duration because, as you can see, if it's only 8,000, 9,000 miles a year that are being put on that car, then they will be able to take full advantage of the warranties that, that are provided when we purchase the vehicles. So, go back to that. So how do we acquire, acquire 21 fully equipped vehicles? What we're, what we're looking at doing is using a lease purchase option to finance the cost of the vehicles, the equipment and the outfitting charges. And we've been in contact, and we have Bancorp here regarding this financing, and they're the only company that we found that can do this type of financing and, and do what, what we need. So the term of the finance would be five years with the initial payment occurring this year and four subsequent payments over the next four years. And we would own the vehicles at the end of the term. So it's not a true lease where you turn the vehicles back. We own the vehicles at the end. Bancorp is able to complete, they provide the financing, they'll acquire the various vehicles for us, they will acquire the equipment, they'll ensure that all the outfitting of the vehicles is done. So we'll buy a car, but then we have about $30,000 worth of equipment that we've gotta, gotta put in the car to make it safe and usable the, the way we use it. And many of you have ridden in our, on patrol in our cars and have seen the, the cages, the computers, the cameras, all of that stuff has to be added later, and they would take care of that. So they'll deliver the vehicles to us fully complete, and it's turnkey service that they give us. The total cost of 21 vehicles over the five years would be 281,346 dollars per year for the next five years. And the overall cost then would be 1,406,730 dollars.
You're starting to talk real money.
Yes. Well, and when I talked earlier about the time value of money and why it makes sense to buy them at all at once, and just assume a conservative 5% discount rate, $65,000 next year is gonna be worth 61,906. And you can see all the way down to, to year five, if $65,000 now will be worth 50,927 in five years. And so what, to illustrate that, if, say we broke this up and said we, we buy five cars a year for the next five years, you're gonna spend an extra $159,000 to do that over, over what we're, what we're requesting if we finance it now and make those payments. So here's some of the benefits of it. We can be a more responsive police force, we can give better service to the community, the crime deterrent in the neighborhood with higher visibility, extended life from the vehicles from six to 11, and I think we can even reach out to 12 years per vehicle. And then the retention of officers would be greater. And so what we're asking here is for council to approve the use of capital contingency funds to purchase the 21 new fully equipped police vehicles on lease purchase program, which would be 281,000 dollars, 281,346 dollars. So the first payment would be this year and four subsequent years. And what this will also, if we can use capital contingency to get this program going, it will be, it will put us where we need to be. And then what, with our vehicle budget, budget funds that we have, we, we can still complete the vehicle rotations, because we still have vehicles that are aged because of the motor pool situation that we're in. So we still need to rotate out some older vehicles this year.
And we have money that's currently budgeted for that, so right now, all we're doing is replacing the ones as they mile out or they're, they don't make any sense to keep them because they're costing more than it's worth, we rotate those out. But we, that's what we're doing. We don't, we're not adding to our fleet. This would add to our fleet to where we need to be, and then after the five years is done, with that, we, we would, we would be done with the capital contingency need, and we would be where we need to be at, and we can maintain with what's currently in our budget.
So do you have any, any other questions?
I have a concern.
Okay.
About technology. You know, I worked in the car business a long time, and I saw a lot of changes from cars with steel dashes and no seatbelts to what we have today. And I'm concerned about police officers driving 12-year-old cars and what the cars will become and what cars will have then. Same concern about the technology inside the cars that you're installing, whether that may change over the course of the 12 years enough that what we're putting in may need to be replaced.
If, if there's some equipment that somehow is defunct because of that reason, we do have money in our budget for computers to, to be upgraded. Obviously, if there's a recall on anything, we're gonna take those in to get, to get them fixed, and we would work with fleet on that now and go in and get anything that's necessary for those vehicles. And as far, I mean, for me, I thought cars were safer back when, you know, you're talking about, now they're all plastic, so, so the, the thing is, is the nice thing, they'd be still under warranty, we'd be able to, to get those things taken care of. And as technology changes, those are, those are issues that we can address through our budget. We have money in our budget for computers and updated gun locks and things like that, so.
So those are things we would, we would account for and, and monitor. If, if it totally, the technology totally went past where we are, then yes, we would, we would be monitoring that. We, we do every year to see what, what's new out there.
What kind of cars are you talking about?
Uh, well, there's a mix. We're looking at the Ford F-150 pickup. There are certain things that, that some of our officers do where that makes sense. There's a Ford Explorer, there's Dodge Durango, and then they don't make, you guys seen that we've got the Ford Tauruses, they don't make those anymore. So we had to move on, and we moved to the, we're looking at the, the Dodge Chargers, and because that's really the only sedan anymore that, that's provided for police service. So what we've, we've done is, is we've talked to a bunch of the officers, so we're gonna have a mix of those vehicles, and that's what that cost represents. We have a mix of all of those vehicles, and all of them, you know, we know that we can take care of and maintain here locally. It's nothing that's exotic or anything like that, so we're, and they're all proven police package vehicles.
Which, which is what?
As far as...
How, how are the vehicles you're buying for the police department different than what you find in a lot of local?
Um, they have differences in the wheelbase, in the gears, in the, in, I think Bob Hugo could help us out with that, how the police package differs, but, but they, they come with the spotlights, and so there are just some, a lot of times it's minor modifications and things, but suspension is better and those kind of things that, that make it a pursuit-rated vehicle is, is basically what we're, what we're looking at. So if you have your normal vehicle, and it's not gonna perform quite as well as a pursuit-rated vehicle, because they fine tune the suspension for what police officers are, are asked to do, you know, and chases, things like that.
I think it decreases liability too, because if you have a police-rated vehicle and it's, it's been police-rated, that if something bad does happen, we can at least say it was a police-rated vehicle versus why didn't you purchase a non-police pursuit-rated vehicle? And some of the vehicles we're purchasing also have armor in the doors too, so, in case, and we, we have had officers shot at, one hit a door here in the last couple of years, so the, it would, it would come with that too on the driver's side.
Go ahead.
Well, I just had a comment. So 37 is how many you have now?
We have 37.
37. So when I think about going from 37 to adding 21, I mean, it's not doubling, but it's, that's a lot. And talking about almost one and a half million dollars, that, I have a really hard time with that. That's a, that's a lot. So as much as I hope the department doesn't hate my guts for saying this, I mean, I wanna support you guys, but financially, that has, that far exceeds my comfort level. I know we've got pending lawsuits that we don't know the outcome of, we've got our budget coming up here in the next couple of months. I'm sure we're gonna be getting a lot of asks for things on that too, so I just really, that's my answer.
I'm concerned in terms of when we've approved police cars, they've come through various dealerships. What is this going to do relationship-wise with our local vendors on automobiles and trucks?
Well, we haven't gone through our local vendors for quite some time, and only because when we purchase police vehicles, we usually will piggyback on the state bid, which usually goes through, it will be, well, when we're talking Ford, it's through Goody Ford in Burley. And so in, in one sense, I guess it's regional, but it's not necessarily local. We have gone through courtesy Ford previously, but they're not able to meet those prices. And so, so we, we usually go with the state bid anyway, and actually, we can, with going through Bancorp, we can actually get even better prices than we could through our state bid.
And I appreciate Bancorp, but are there others that we have to competitively put this out for bid for?
Well, and we discussed that with, with Legal, and Rich can talk to that.
Rich Deal, Deputy City Attorney.
My research indicates at this point Bancorp is the only one that's doing this. Basically, you're looking at a vehicle from an essence, I don't wanna use cradle to grave, but basically from order to delivery. There aren't other companies doing this. The information I received, yes, this would be lower than state bid on the piggyback. There are some things that I still wanna look at, you know, I, I think the request before council is, do you wanna go forth or lease explore this, go forth with, and I think the department's very cognizant that they are asking for a significant amount of money. I mean, they're looking for a big investment direction from you folks, and I would make sure that that is done properly in Legal. You know, to circle back, yes, we, previously, we've looked at local dealers, and they can't meet the price from the state bid, and that's who we've always gone with. And the information I have is that Bancorp in essence give a better deal than the state piggyback bid, which is what we've done in the past. Now, the one thing we can look at is, explore, is are there other companies or things that could do, do what Bancorp and Dodge do, but I'm not aware of any at this time. Another possibility, and I don't wanna, is, well, another possibility would be to bid this out, it may not achieve the department's goals, but incrementally. And I understand, but the county, the request here is to get your folks' input, but what do you wanna do now?
I have a quick comment. I think one, and I do understand that it is a significant amount, like large amount, and it's quite a big to digest, but I think we are facing a huge issue in the department in trying to, getting more police officers, keeping more police officers, and I mean, some of these funds are there to protect our citizens, and I think if that's going to have an impact on that, perhaps we should seriously consider this.
I'm prepared to make a motion that we encourage and encourage the exploration of this as a significant possibility for our police department's fleet. Is that clear enough?
Not at all, but I do have a question. A, a question. How much more exploration do you need to do here? I mean, what, what is the, have you done, are you done?
As far as we're concerned, I, I don't think we need to do any more exploration. I think it's, it's, we're throwing it to you all to see if you believe it's, it's within the bounds and within your guys' wheelhouse to, to do, to do this. And one comment I would make on the, the cost, it's, it's been in our strategic five-year plan, well, and this is the second iteration of it, so we're like seven years into it to get to the car per man. So we will get there, it's just a matter of, of how soon, and so either maybe spend the money upfront to get it there, or we do it incrementally. And like I said, incrementally, it ends up costing more in the long run, but however you're more comfortable, I think is, is the best way to do it.
So, so can I follow up on that for just a second? So we talked to finance about this, and right now, we're looking at capital contingency. There's, there wasn't a lot that was spent out of capital contingency, and, and those, those funds are there, and they said they would, they would be appropriate for that. But on, to maybe answer the counselman, Adamson's, on the... But on, to maybe answer Councilwoman Adamson's on the expense, the overall expense, I mean, we may end up being able to pay off more this year on that than just the $281,000 if we do have some salary savings, if the council would approve that. We're shorthanded right now, and we're trying to hire people, but our background and our psychological and our polygraph requirements are pretty strict. And so we may have some salary savings, so that may be another way we could do that, that with money that's already budgeted, so that that reduces that number, it's just another way to get there without even tapping into capital contingency.
Is there an early payment penalty?
No. No, we're just asking for approval, we have no...
In the contract, is there an early payment penalty?
No, oh, no, there isn't, no.
Roger. I have a little different problem than Heidi, in that once we do access capital contingency, we're also presuming budget for four more years that this will be in budget, you know?
Maybe, if we weren't able to pay off earlier.
Well, but the plan that we've been presented is that we will pay $281,346, and I don't know how that factors out. We normally pay somewhere about $180,000 to $200,000, I think, a year for cars.
That's, no, we pay more than that.
We're in the 200s.
The budget, what they're asking for, from what I understand, correct me, but they're not asking to take their five cars that we budget annually and take that money and put it toward this 281. They're asking for that money, but then also the 281 in future years until...
That's what my point is.
Past the five years, yeah.
That's my point, is that this is a budget process, and we're committing to a budget process right now for four years. And I think this should be more, it should be considered as part of our budgeting process, to me, because yes, there is a contingent, capital expenditure this year, but we're making a budgetary commitment without the framework for a budget for four years right now, if we make that decision, because it says approve the use of capital contingency. If we do that, then we're actuating our budget for 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023. And I need a context in terms of making that kind of budgetary commitment to really see the ramifications. What are the replacements going to be after that? You know, it's alluded to, we won't have to replace so often, but some of our cars are going to be old by the time we hit 2023. And we're going to be then on a schedule of not having to address 37 cars, we're going to be on a schedule of having to address 58 cars annually in our budget. So for me, it's a, I understand the need, but I also understand that our budget has a lot of constraints in it, and I've got to be able to look at that in the context of the budget.
And I understand, and the concept that we're looking at is, once we get to that level, to the 58, we would have a regular rotation schedule of whether it's two or three cars or four cars per year, once they meet that mileage. So instead of dealing with five or six or seven a year, once we get there, it's actually two, three, or four a year, based on the annual rotation. And I don't know, and maybe I just don't understand the reason we ask for just the 281 out of capital contingency and then for future years, so as not to come and say, hey, we want to deplete that whole capital contingency fund in one lack, we want to spread it out, and this was the best mechanism to maybe get where we need to be and also be somewhat responsible with what we're asking for. And, you know, so I don't know, and I guess it does, if you guys make that decision to say we were going to commit to using this capital contingency fund for the next five years, this amount of it, then I guess in a way that is a budget.
It automatically moves out of capital contingency into your police budget and next year's budget.
Okay.
I mean, that's the way I would think budgets work. And so that's my struggle right now, is to understand if that's appropriate, because we haven't reviewed our whole budget, we don't know where our holes are that we've got to plug and stuff like that. So I understand the concept. I also think that when you've got 60 vehicles, divided by 12, you're going to be replacing around five a year. I mean, that's going to be your schedule out there, so that's the only way you replace them.
And that's generally what we budget for, is about five a year.
Okay.
So my recommendation, counsel, is, I think you've got a proposal here. Next week, we have a study session, I forget the name of that meeting.
Work session clarification.
Work session clarification, thank you. Work session clarification meeting. That'll give you a week to think about it and to contemplate, go through the presentation again. Reach out and talk to these, reach out and talk to these guys so that you're a little bit more up to speed on it and stuff, and let's have a discussion next week, is what I would suggest.
What's the balance of the capital contingency fund? What's the balance of the response capital contingency?
It's the same as the city's capital contingency fund, so it's...
We can get that number next week, so you have a...
Also, Bob from Bancorp is here from, he drove up from Utah to be here, so if the council has any questions of him, he made a special trip up here.
So Rick, he didn't ask about a finance charge, what's a finance charge?
We might have already talked about that.
Well, you're welcome for the opportunity to get out of the rat race down there, you're welcome.
What happens if one's totaled?
If one's totaled, we would, depending on the circumstances, sometimes ICRMP will pay for that, or somebody else's insurance will pay for that. And they usually give us whatever the residual is on the vehicle, and then we can factor that in with a...
Why don't you come up here?
I can answer that, just to clear that with another city in Utah, Manaway City.
If you'd go ahead and introduce yourself for people, you're going to have to scoot up next to Rich. And introduce so the people watching can know who you are.
My name's Bob Hugo at the Bancorp Bank. We are based on the East Coast, and we're in Utah, we're in all 50 states. We work with the federal government, FEMA, because we are the direct source, and it is the cheapest source of procurement. And having said that, the city of Manaway just totaled one of the cars that we had, it was a Ford Explorer 2017, their insurance told them they were going to get $18,000 back. That does not replace that car for turnkey operation with the expense, the expenses it takes to replace that car 100%. Their insurance, with our assistance helping get to that point, including equipment, including replacement, they were able to capitalize on a return of $40,000 for that car replacement, because there is replacement costs to get that vehicle to go to the next operation tomorrow, sorry, and keep going. So having said that, we're an asset partner that way as well. We'll help with the insurance, if there is a totaled vehicle, we'll keep it running, we'll keep things operating, make sure the expenses are taken care of, and your officer is having a vehicle to go forward. I presume that you're not maintenance leases? No.
All right. I think my motion was still appropriate.
It probably was, I was confused with your motion.
I confuse you more than...
So we will, I think, please reach out and visit with these guys, and so next week, when we come back, we can discuss it, and we'll also have a number for you on what that capital contingency number is, as well.
Can you use that meeting? Okay.
Maybe, but we'll call you.
Okay.
We know how to get ahold of you.
How to get ahold of us. I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for the last two budget items, and appreciate your questions and everything you do for us, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you very much. With that, we are going to go ahead and break for lunch.
Before you adjourn, I think it's important that we acknowledge Mr. Michael Orr in the audience.
That's right.
He's here to heckle us.
Mike did work.
I know.
He did well.
He must be stowed in in focus camera.
Yeah, he's stowed in in focus camera. It's good to have you with us, Mike. Thank you, we will be reconvenienced, I would say, a half hour if...
And thank you for joining us for our work session after the lunch break. We'll go ahead and continue on with agenda item number 11, Water Department update on pressure management project. Water Department staff will provide an update on pressure management projects identified within the facility plan, planning stage, and pressure waiver.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm Justin Armstrong, Water Superintendent. I'm joined today with Skylar Allen, he's our utilities engineer, as well as Jeff Mansfield, our public works director. As stated within the agenda today, we've been asked to provide you with a quick update and project status of some of our pressure management and optimization projects that we've been working on to comply with some of the operating rules for public drinking water systems. So today, just as a general outline, first, we will provide you with a brief history and background of why we began implementing some of the pressure management projects. We'll also discuss one of the particular rules that surrounds public drinking water systems, and we will provide you with a general overview of our system and the current operation with, within our system and those pressures. We'll also discuss what is within the approved pressure waiver with DEQ, and then Skylar will discuss some of the current projects that we've been working on over the previous years, as well as some of the projects that we'll be working on in upcoming years within our facility plan. So in the essence of time today, you know, I plan to hopefully, you know, go through this fairly quickly, please, at any point if you have some...
Our plans aren't divergent.
But, you know, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, you know, as we go through some of these, so. I think before we start talking about the issuance of the Idaho Department of Environmental Qualities Compliance Agreement Schedule, I think it's important to understand what's involved with that. So DEQ utilizes a compliance agreement schedule as a mechanism or a tool for regulated systems to meet certain targets and deadlines in order to come in with compliance and changes within some of their regulations and codes. So I know it kind of sounds like a dirty agreement or whatnot, pretty harsh, the way, that's the way I took it initially, but really, it was a good process, because we were able to negotiate with our regional office and negotiate the terms and come up with a realistic timeline to meet some of those conditions. And so, in a way, it's kind of their soft approach before really hammering down on fines and penalties and other things. With that, there was a couple burning issues with DEQ. One of the primary issues was we didn't have on their record an approved facilities planning study. Although the city had gone through the efforts in 2005 to create a master plan, the intent of that master plan was never meeting the checklist for DEQ for their approval. First, we felt like we needed to understand our system and the operations and what we would be facing before we submitted for the purposes of their facility planning study. And so, as we worked through it, they wanted to ensure that we were meeting that checklist, and within the compliance agreement schedule that was issued on January 22, 2016, we set target dates. First was, within a year's time, we would submit a pressure waiver to come under the operational guidelines that were identified in the IDAPA rules, as well as submission of a facility plan that provided them a basic understanding of our system operation and responsibilities. And within that, you know, it provides a better understanding of responsibilities, how we operate, the ability to serve future growth, and identify some of those potential deficiencies that we had within our system. It also generates a, both a short-term and a long-term capital improvement plan for us to begin budgeting and show how we're going to meet those objectives within our current rates and practices. And then, long-term, it shows how we can meet some of those future deficiencies that we might have with growth, at our current growth rates and other things. And so, the plan addresses how you'll grow, where you're going to be, and what is needed within the system. So as I said before, you know, the other issue was, and this is kind of the focus of our discussion today, was how we planned on managing some of the higher operating pressures within our system, both within the existing portions of town that we've been serving for over 100 years, as well as how we plan to serve some of these areas in the So IDAPA, or the Idaho Administrative Rules and Procedure Act, lists many rules and procedures for both regulation and enforcement. Section 580108 deals specifically with water systems, and more specifically, section 55201 deals with operating criteria for water systems for quantity and pressure requirements. So the basic summary of this rule establishes that a public water system must maintain a minimum of 40 PSI during peak hour demands at the service connection, or in most cases, that's at the meter connection in front of the property. It also establishes that the distribution system should maintain static pressures below a limit of 100 PSI, and generally, keep them below 80 PSI if possible.
Justin, what is the community used to, maybe that's the wrong terminology to use, but what is typically there, because when we've done this, which has been a good process to go through, I don't disagree with that, but we've heard a number of people that have said, you know, I can't water my lawn anymore, and my sprinklers don't hit everything that they used to.
Sure.
I can't wash my hair.
Yeah, when I turn the shower on and somebody turns the faucet on in the kitchen, I have to run around in a circle to get wet, type of a deal. What are we used to?
No, that's a good question, and that's kind of this next slide, I'm going to discuss that. You know, as we analyzed our system, a lot of them, this is just a full-blown analysis, and this is basically the model of our system. And what you can see in that indication of the blue are areas that are above 100 PSI. So as you can see, that includes the majority of the valley floor. It operates between that 80 to 100 PSI and settings, and it all depends on time of day and other things. If somebody moves from one location to another, there might be a change of pressure because of the pressure zone that you're moving into. So a lot of those pressures vary depending on what zone you live in. And historically, our water system has always had a higher pressure rating, and that's historically due to the original headworks of our system and the way our system was built initially. It was built based on surface water supplies that came from both Gibson Jack and Mead Creek, and those were conveyed along a transmission line and stored up in open basin reservoirs right below what's known as the women's prison right now. That kind of set hydraulic grade line for the valley system, and then, as the system implemented more, more demand, more growth, culinary wells were built to offset the demands, and so we had to build against that existing pressure that was already in place. And so that was kind of a challenge, and of course, at that time, there wasn't limits on the pressure. You designed around it, we didn't face those regulation limits. We didn't face those regulation limits that we're facing today. So, this is a fairly new rule. It came out in the early 2000s of setting that 100 PSI limit, but we've got to meet that objective and come under compliance, and so. One of the things, too, historically, with the city working with those higher pressures, it required us to adopt certain plumbing codes and ordinances that required individual pressure regulating devices to be installed to control that pressure at the individual connection going into the dwelling or unit. Most residents, they get used to the high pressure. You know, they prefer it, and we conveyed that to DEQ. We conveyed that, you know, normally, we don't get any complaints regarding our pressure. In fact, if we receive a complaint, it's on the other side of things. We generally receive it for lower pressure. And so the tricky part is, is you've got to balance those high pressures with the fire flow availability and other things, and plus, you're dealing with the challenges of large topography here in the valley, because you've got different benches on both sides of the valley, you've got ravines and other things, and so sometimes, as you convey water across one ridge to another, there's a little bit of a pressure loss, and you've got to overcome those pressure differences to pump it and get it up there. And so, part of our report, we explain that process to give them a better understanding of how we operate our system. And, you know, pressure has its negative effects as well. It can increase your leakage, it can increase, you know, breaks and other things, and decrease the life of pipes and other things, and so, we understand that. You know, it may not be a risk of necessarily health and safety of the water, but it is a concern and kind of a nuisance when it does decrease the life of things. So, as we worked with our consultant, we studied and evaluated 46 pressure zones. That's currently what, well, at the time, that's currently what we had in our system. Those pressure zones are growing as we grow as a city, and we've also made some changes in some of our operating conditions. And so, we identified those, and we looked at the effects and how we could meet some of the minimum operating requirements while maintaining adequate pressure during a fire flow scenario. The city asked DEQ to consider a waiver within select pressure zones that met three specific characteristics. The main issue that we faced was cost feasibility. As you saw within the other slide, most of those high pressures were caused in the valley floor. So to revamp the entire system, you would be revamping wells, booster stations, other sources of supply, and lowering that, lowering the operating pressures and building new infrastructure to convey that over to your boosters and other things so that customers wouldn't experience that. So it was really cost prohibitive to do that. The other consideration was that high operating pressure was not considered threatening to both public health or general safety for the public. And the third point that we offered was, the majority of our existing services were also, were already protected. And so, we conveyed that. We actually looked at building permits, and we provided a percentage that were actually covered by these individual regulators. So in that, we asked for a temporary waiver to be considered so that projects could be implemented over time, and we defined three time periods. One, a short-term time period, projects that we could complete reasonably within zero to five years. Then we grouped projects in a five-to-10-year period for midterm, and then projects that were a little bit more, that had a higher cost value, we pushed them out a little bit further. And then we identified those capital improvement to that and showed that we could comply within that, or at least get closer to the regulation. That pressure waiver was then approved by DEQ on June 16, 2016, and we implemented that as part of our facility plan.
Is that for both, the permanent and the temporary approval?
Yeah, that was for the waiver. So the waiver included all of those three conditions, for a permanent within the valley floor, or within certain zones that really weren't feasible to do, and then for those other timeframes in developing the capital improvement program, plugging that into our facility planning study, so.
So again, excuse me, I'm Skylar Allen, the engineer for the public utilities, and I'm just going to discuss a little bit about some of what we've been completing to now, and some of what we're looking to do next to comply with those three time horizons, the short-term, intermediate-term, and long-term compliance windows within the pressure waiver. So as soon as the waiver was approved, we set about to make some adjustments to our existing pressure regulating valve stations. There are 10 zones here which we made adjustments to the pressure settings, which reduced anywhere from 10 to 35 PSI in those zones. That was done as soon as we were able to notify people that it was going to happen and make those adjustments to the zones.
The next- Yeah, and I just wanted to add on to that, you know, those were quick wins for us. Those had no cost tied to them. It was simply just going in and adjusting the regulator valve to bring it down, and we were able to model the effects of that to see, you know, what would happen at the upper elevation versus the lower elevation, and then plug in a fire scenario to understand what would happen in an event like that. And so, having the model do that beforehand, before we go out and just physically start monkeying with the system, allows us to get some real data and verify that data out in the field with pressure gauges and ensure that we're actually seeing that reflective to what we've modeled.
And that's already been done?
These have already been done, yeah.
So with making those changes, you can see on the right-hand column, for example, the Zone 15 on Mona Vista, we went from a highest pressure of 134 down to 117. That was a number that DEQ was willing to accept for that zone. And as Justin mentioned, there's a lot of balancing of what's the minimum pressure in that zone then going to be. We can't have that drop below the minimum of 40 at any scenario. So in our maximum day demand, we need to have a little bit of cushion there. We try to target a minimum pressure of not less than about 50 PSI, because that gives us just a little bit of room for the peak hour event, when everybody's watering their lawns at 6:00 a.m. on July 23rd, or whatever our max day happens to be for the year, that we don't drop that pressure below that minimum. And so we have that range to operate within. But it is a challenge to balance that range against our topography, the challenges of the way the system's constructed, and still be able to provide the fire flow protection that we need to have in each of these zones. Anytime we isolate and have a regulator across the zone boundary, it has to be able to still deliver a pretty significant volume of water to be able to deliver fire protection flow. And it is a real challenge for our system in some of these areas to balance all of those needs. We continue to try to improve that where we can. These, like Justin said, are kind of quick wins and didn't have much cost associated with them, other than the time it took us to do the analysis and figure out what we could do, and then, as part of just the regular maintenance of those regulators, they were able to make those adjustments, and then monitor to make sure things were aligning with what we anticipated.
So, did that really have an effect, like in Mona Vista? You went from 134 to 117. That doesn't seem like much.
So that's, you know, a 20-pound difference. It really depends on where you're changing from, whether you would notice that at the tap, and also what you're looking at. Because most of our homes have individual pressure regulators installed, those are typically set at 70 or 75 PSI, so the pressure you see inside your house would be limited to whatever that regulator is set at. So if we changed from 134 to 117 in the street, but your regulator is set at 75, you're not going to see any change at all. But if you're looking at somebody's irrigation system, which may not be behind the regulator, they might see a little bit of change. At that level of pressure, you won't see much. It becomes much more noticeable as we drop in pressure. 20 pounds going from 75 to 55 is a larger percentage change than from 134 to 117, for example. So those changes become more noticeable when we get down into the range of 60 to 80 PSI. You can see, a smaller change becomes noticeable than when you're in these higher pressures.
And two, I'd like to add on to that, I mean, your irrigation system generally doesn't like those high pressures. You get a lot of misting or overspray or other things that you've got to dial that down. And so your sprinkler system can be a little bit less effective. Sure, you might be able to shoot over a longer distance, but the actual water that you're conveying out, some of it's lost in the air because it's simply misting and blowing out. And so, you actually want those big, large drops of water to be dropping, and so sometimes you need to space out, you know. A good irrigation company will look at that, and they'll look at those pressures and say, "Okay, well, we want to design it around, say, 60 or 70 PSI so that we get that effect, and we're getting less misting out of the system," so.
So the first major area where we made, excuse me, big improvements was the Johnny Creek area. Beginning, actually, prior to the pressure waiver, we had some project plans for this area. The before picture there, you can see the pressure band here, the dark blue is 105 to 140 PSI. The purple is above 140 PSI. The light blue is 80 to 105, and the green, the darker green, is 40 to 80 PSI. So ideally, we'd want everybody to be either that green color or the light blue. The dark blue is in excess of the pressure limit, and the purple is in excess even of what we are comfortable with, I think, at the water department. So it's, this was an area that definitely needed addressed. We had pressures up to nearly 240 PSI, depending on the operating condition, at some locations in this area. This was one DEQ was not willing to say, "Okay, we have to do something here." So what was done there included construction of a new transmission line from the booster station up to the intersection of Johnny Creek and Sunset. It's not quite a mile, I believe, but it is a fair distance of transmission line, and that allowed us to then come back and install pressure regulating stations to break up and create what we refer to as pressure bands coming back down the hill. When that system was constructed, it was just the booster station pushing up to the tank, and everybody saw the pressure that was set by that tank elevation, all the way to the bottom of the hill. So by having that transmission line, we then, we installed four pressure regulating stations as part of the different phases of this project, and we're able to adjust those zone boundaries and bring the top end of those pressure bands down to something a little more comfortable for us, and also closer to what DEQ was hoping to have. You can see from the after picture, looking up in that area, we still do have some of the dark blue, which is in excess of 105 PSI, but it's much less, and we no longer have any of the purple, meaning above 140 PSI.
When you have those really high ones, you said in people's houses, most houses have a regulator, but if there's super-high pressure coming in and then the regulator is keeping it much lower, does that cause, I mean, what problems does that cause?
So, as Justin mentioned before, high pressure has its hazards, because when you have a higher pressure, you're putting more stress on the pipe. As the pressure fluctuates, you're creating more incremental damage to that pipe and wearing it out at a rapid, a more rapid pace.
Well, probably appropriate illustration was what was happening at the golf course, the hammer effect.
Yeah, if you've got a high-flow condition, then all of a sudden, you're stopping that water. The golf course situation's a little bit different because we were dealing with the surge effect of high pressure based on closure of system components within the irrigation system. And so that's a little bit different than this scenario, where it's a static or a non-moving pressure condition, which is just high. If you add on top of that a surge event, then-
Well, in my house, when, before we put the regulator, for example, you could hear when something shut off.
Sure.
Yeah, but in the, and you knew it wasn't good on the pipes.
It's definitely not good on the pipes. The pressure fluctuation's very bad on pipes.
I meant specifically, you know, having such high pressure, but then having it regulated, you know, does that create some kind of specific problem?
So, the regulator is designed to do that, and as long as it's functioning properly, there's not a particular problem by having that situation. Having the high pressure in and of itself creates a higher hazard. In the event of a failure, you're going to receive more water from a smaller leak at higher pressure. There's also a higher probability of that leak happening because of the higher pressure. So, in the process of doing this project, we heard a lot of different comments from people in this neighborhood. Some, as we know, were a little bit upset because their sprinklers no longer reached where they used to, and that's understandable. It's difficult to change from what you're used to, to something new, and especially when it has an economic cost to you to make that adjustment. That's painful and understandable. On the other side, we had people who were in that very high-pressure band, who were quite excited that they would no longer have to make sure that they shut their hose off at the faucet and not at the spray nozzle so they didn't blow up their garden hose. I heard several people tell me that, that they were excited for that to be the change. It is a balance, right? And we have to do our best to make sure that everyone serves the best that we can. Our top priority is the health and safety of the water system and the people who consume the water. And then, of course, we want to make sure that the supply of water is sufficient to meet the other demands that people have, including the irrigation of their lawns and gardens. We want to do that in the safest manner as possible, and that's what this is all trying to accomplish, is balancing all of those needs. We also add fire protection to that as well. Balancing all those things takes a lot of consideration to make sure that we can deliver all of those things at the same time without compromising someone else's ability to have the same things. It is a tricky balance, but we believe we do a fairly good job of achieving that balance. The next major project that we tackled is in the Highland bench area. This is actually in the midterm of the pressure waiver. However, with development happening in that area, it accelerated the timeframe for this project being executed. This project was constructed last summer, summer of 2018. We installed two new pressure regulating stations in the Highland area. As you see on the before picture, again, we had several services in there where the pressure was above 140 PSI, many that were above 105 PSI. The pressure band, if you can see, I can see this one better, so I'll point over here. You can see where it transitions right here from the blue, the dark blue, to the green. This is the new zone boundary right here. And it makes this little funky trace down Butte Street, because we only have one waterline in Butte Street, and that is the transmission main which connects this upper section to the booster station which feeds that zone. So at this time, we don't have an option to take those guys to a lower pressure zone, unless we install another pipe in that section of Butte Street. So until that happens sometime in the future, they'll remain in that higher pressure band. Once we get below right here, you see there is a couple of these purple nodes. There are no services connected. As part of this project, we relocated- As part of this project, we relocated those services onto the other pipe in that neighborhood where it would be in the lower pressure band. And so those are just indicating that within my, within the water model, we have pressures above 140 PSI at that location in the pipe, but there are no services connected to that pipe at those locations. Again, we see that we took a lot of these dark blue, eliminated all of the purple. And in our new condition, we ranged from about 60 PSI down to closing in on 100, it's about 97 by Olympus Road. Depending on where you're at, because there is a little bit of elevation change. Previous to this, we were 115 to 147.
Why, on your after, on the right-hand side, why is one house one color and the next one a different?
So the colors you're seeing are actually junctions within the hydraulic model. And that's where I'm able to take output from the hydraulic model. We've shaded the area to indicate which pressure zone they lay within.
I'm talking on the right side of that.
So right, for example...
You go through those blocks and...
For example, this one here is blue and the next one up is green?
Well, I'm looking further back to the left.
Right in here?
Heda Street. Down one. You're on the other side, though. To your right.
Yeah, it's down low. Right there?
So right there along Hiskey?
Further over, I mean, you go along, there's a blue dot and there's nothing, 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 nothing. And there's a blue dot, there's nothing, nothing, and there's a blue dot. I'm curious why one spot is colored and one isn't.
So those blue dots typically represent like a fire hydrant or some other junction or tee within our system that's modeled that way.
So you're not saying that those other homes are not affected?
No, so that just provides you kind of a basic understanding. Not every service connection is actually modeled, other than we look at those based on the representative of that junction and then demands are allocated to that point.
So in order to run the hydraulic model efficiently, we have to simplify the system somewhat. If we had every service modeled, it would take a lot longer to run.
There's a lot of calculations involved.
So this is Highland. We made these changes to the pressure settings in November of 2018. And we anticipate that we will have questions from residents in that area when spring comes and they begin irrigation watering. And that's fine. It's understandable that they have those questions. And we look forward to responding to those. The objective of this, of course, is the same. We're looking to comply with the pressure waiver and bring the system closer to compliance with that maximum pressure restriction. We are still in excess of 100 PSI at several of the services within this zone. As we went through this project, we did discuss with DEQ and they are okay with what we've done here as it complies as much as possible with the pressure waiver. And they did buy off on this and said, yes, this is an acceptable implementation of what was asked for in the pressure waiver for this area.
Have those households noticed a difference in just household use of water?
Some have.
You have?
Some have.
Some have. We've had a few questions from people. As we were discussing before, for indoor use, it is less noticeable. But when you start from 70, 75 PSI and you start turning on more demand and you drop some pressure, you will notice that a lot quicker than when you start from 120 and start turning on more demand and drop to 110. It doesn't, you don't see that at the end of the tap nearly as much. It's not quite as simple when we add that individual regulator into the mix. But having more pressure on the upstream side of that regulator allows the system to more easily stay at that pressure when you demand more water. And so it's, it does make a difference. The fix is not necessarily palatable or appealing to everyone, but it's use water more slowly and you'll see less pressure change. We do expect that we'll see more concern as people begin to water in the spring in this area. When we do get those calls, we do take them seriously and we will send out someone to verify the pressure at their tap. We did have a few instances in the Johnny Creek area where there were, there were things that we didn't anticipate that were happening in the field. And we want to make sure that we're on top of that and looking to make sure that things are what we anticipated them to be. And help people, if they are seeing something that's out of the ordinary, that we can kind of point them in the right direction and try and find solutions to those problems. We can't go in and fix them for them if it's on the private side of the meter. But we can at least come and check and make sure that our system is functioning the way it should and help direct them toward finding some solutions to their problems. We do have several more things to complete. The pressure waiver had about four projects for each of those time horizons, or more specifically, four pressure zones of concern related to each of the time horizons, each of which has at least one or two projects to comply with what we need to do there. The next few projects that we anticipate taking on include the Johnny Creek on Kahina Street. We have actually a low pressure and low fire protection capacity on Kahina Street. In order to solve that, we need to make a connection. And we're working on obtaining the necessary corridor in order to make that connection. Booth Road is a project which is in the, this fiscal year, capital improvements projects. We'll be installing a new pressure regulator station and some piping which will serve the neighborhood off of Booth in the Alon Pocatello Creek and reduce some pressures there and allow us to make some adjustments above that as well. The Westello tank, in the Westello area, we have a lower tank and an upper tank. The upper tank is 20,000 gallons, mainly just establishes the hydraulic grade for the area. It's not enough volume to provide fire protection. We are working on a solution which will eliminate that upper tank as it is nearing needing some major rehabilitation. And rather than do that, we're going to do some other modifications at the lower tank which will allow us to bypass the booster station there and still provide adequate pressure to the upper section of that Westello area. And it will also significantly improve the fire protection capacity in that area as well. We have several other smaller boundary, pressure zone boundary adjustments that we're looking to do as they intersect with our mainline replacement projects. We look to try to make modifications where we can to improve the zone boundaries to bring us more into compliance with the pressure requirements. And we have a couple of those that are in the really short term, this year, next year, where we'll be able to make a couple of zone boundary adjustments which will be a part of complying with this pressure waiver. Any more questions on the other questions?
That it?
I guess so.
It's a pretty quick way to raise a whole lot of havoc in the city for us. It really is. It's good that we're going through this.
Well, and as a positive thing, you know, it also has a positive consequence in it. You know, at those same flow rates with reduced pressure, you're actually reducing some of that. So there's a little bit less water consumption. Meaning when you turn on your tap, you don't have that high pressure that's just forcing almost double the volume down the drain. And so it does have a positive effect to customers. It isn't all negative. But we do understand and we are sensitive to it, so.
On that same note, we also anticipate that we'll see less water loss from some of the leaks that we know exist that we can't find. Because of lower pressures, you lose less water. Justin also mentioned that when you irrigate at a pressure that's correct for your emitter, you're more efficient in your watering. It's, I won't say impossible, but nearly so, to find an emitter that's efficient at 100-plus PSI. And so by reducing that pressure, we'll have more efficient watering even with the reduction in range that some people may see in their sprinkler systems. More efficient watering, meaning we're losing less of that water in the atmosphere. People can potentially reduce how much water they're utilizing to get that water actually to the grass.
And it's also hard to quantify some of the energy savings that we've realized based on some of this. But we are currently part of a strategic energy management cohort with other municipalities in eastern Idaho. And we've achieved further than our initial goal, which was a 5% energy savings. We're nearly 8% on that. And so we feel like some of these projects are contributing to that. But like I said, it's a little bit hard to quantify on this particular one, so.
Sure. Super. Thank you very much. Thanks for the report. With that, we will move to agenda item number 12, is a Terry First project update. Staff will present the findings on the Terry First project that took place in 2018. We would also like to excuse Councilwoman Adamson. She's got places to be. They're not in this area, so she's got to get on the road.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Matthew Lewis. I'm senior planner with the planning department. And with me is my colleague Carl Anderson, who's also senior planner. And he was heavily involved with this project. And so I appreciate all his help on this. I'm going to go through this pretty quick. So if you want to stop anywhere, just let me know. But at the end, we'll get to what we really want to kind of ask the council of, so. Anyways, so as an introduction, we'll have a recap of the Terry First, the process, recommendations, and then the next steps. I'd like to thank the members of the steering committee. And in special recognition, of course, to the mayor and the council for your support on this one. For all the folks that were involved with ISU, especially with our department. And there's a couple city staff that I'd like to personally thank would be Mike Neville and his staff with traffic. Without all their help, that would have been a difficult project. Gary Evans, who did the surveying for the parking and so forth. And then Hannah Sanger and then Maggie Clark, who have a lot of volunteer connections and so forth. So it was a collaborative effort, that's my point I want to make. And a lot of people were involved, other than myself and others. So why Terry First? To, again, just as a reminder, to strengthen connection between ISU and Old Town, improve streets, pedestrian access and safety along Terry and First, support long-term economic development of the neighborhood and city. As far as the process, we held multiple walk and talk meetings, hosted a questionnaire online along with multiple mapping activities to gauge the public's experience along the corridor. There's also photo voice mapping and pain point mapping as well. This is a word cloud that was created based on written comments received from the walk and talk and other community meetings. Again, as a reminder, here's your, the project site, basically extending from the intersection of South Fifth and Terry at ISU. And extending all the way down to First, you have five calm, traffic calming areas. And then ultimately, kind of the center of activity, if you recall, that area. The Lemonless Lane, you may recall, that was the kind of the purple lane that we had. And the intent of that was to really serve as a real-life rendering of how the street, which might function if done properly. And intended to show where the curb line might extend one day. And in practice, purple is a color utilized by the consultants and chosen to separate itself by traffic norms. Lemonless Lane, these are some examples from other communities. The pop-up park, this image displays a full version of the proposed pop-up. Of course, because of cost, we were unable to pursue that. But you recall what we had and what was really kind of a neat deal that was really put together by a lot of folks that worked hard on that. Here's the parklet that's in front of Port of Valley Brewing with the city flag. Traffic calming, examples of the traffic calming included the Dutch intersection, which is your first illustration there. And First and Terry, and then colored crosswalks at Fourth and Fifth, and then the street mural with ISU. There's some additional treatments that one can make. But because of time, cost, manpower, we were unable to achieve that. Of course, this was a volunteer-driven project. Without the volunteers, this would not have been as successful as it was. The ISU art department students and faculty created three beautiful murals in just a short period of time. I think it was a week. And it is awesome. And I mean, they're still there. And those people were really excited about that. So the event, the day of the event, the next photo shows an overhead shot from drone once the pop-up park. And then the other is the multi-use lane, Lemonless Lane. And then the parklet in front of Port of Valley Brewing. Another pot, there's another picture of the pop-up park with vegetation and so forth. And I should note that, you know, that was all donated for the day. And, you know, it was a lot of activity for, you know, the period that we had it. Again, here's some examples of the wall art and street art. ISU, the symbol with the mountain kind of on the flag and so forth. And then, of course, the art that was created by the art students. The parklet can be anything that takes up a parking space or two. Outdoor seating area, you usually can have that themed. In this particular case, our theme was after the railroad and the city of Pocatello flag. And then people brought to the sidewalk and you can see them kind of just gathering out there, which is really one of the purposes of that parklet. One of the other things that we wanted to do, and I thought personally is important, is one of safety. And we created these bulb outs at the intersections of South Fourth and Fifth. And I thought this was pretty successful because it really does get you out there in front of the parking spaces and so forth. And so, you know, it helps for safety, queuing, that type of thing for pedestrians and for folks that are in their vehicles. The next one was the parallel and backup parking, back end. We'll continue on this a little bit, but, you know, people got it as far as just the backup. But in this corridor, it was probably something, based on our experiences, not something we would want to continue with. But it was, that's why you try it. Try to see if it's going to work or not.
It seems like it worked okay. And then when we finished the project, everybody just started parking how they wanted it.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I mean, it was okay, but it wasn't probably something great.
Yeah, and the paint was, the paint, as far as parking, lasted a little bit longer because it was actual, like, survey paint. So, but, and so our, the city crews, they really helped to kind of clean that up quicker than it would have been if it was just rain.
Can you explain real quickly what the purpose of the back end parking is? I mean, what's the advantage of that?
And I'll go ahead and start and then Carl can jump in. But, you know, it works really well. The only other place that we have the backup parking is in that short area that's between MLK and 90 The only other place that we have the backup parking is in that short area that's between MLK and Ninth Street. Lovejoy, I think it is.
In front of the library at ISU.
And it worked, that works really good because you got the one-way, you get back in, so forth. Usually, in an engineering, safety point of view, a lot of the traffic folks will say backup parking is safer. You know, I think they've used it, they use it in Victor, some areas, and it's been real successful. And I think it really depends on the corridor. And, but I can attest, as far as just that one experience that we have in Pocatello, that's worked really well.
And it seems like the key difference is that that's a one-way
Yeah.
street with the Terry First. That was part of the problem with backing in, is that it's two ways. And if someone was coming, you couldn't just, you know,
Yeah.
do what you needed to do to back in.
And that's part of the, you know, the measure twice, cut once approach that we took with this. Part of the thinking also was that the back-end parking was, might mesh well more with the multi-use path that we had there. Kind of providing some protection for the pedestrians, bicyclists that we would have there. So that was another component to that as well. But you're right, that's one thing we saw ourselves, is people were either pulling in cross-traffic or backing in, which actually kind of created a little bit more of hazard in the area.
Yeah. So, jumping to the recommendations. So it was designed to make the most of the public investment in the street and sidewalk infrastructure. Enhance appeal, safety and aesthetics through the corridor. Encourage private investment as consistent with communities' desires. And promote a stronger connection between Old Town and Idaho State. So, in the final report, some of the short-term recommendations. First of all, this stripe on the street, parking. Buffer and widening the sidewalk between parking and the building frontages. Keep the park. Encourage the addition of art. And I can tell you that there's a lot of interest in that. Install bulb outs at Fourth and Fifth. We'll need to work closely with ITD officials and, of course, the street and traffic departments on that. Have the ISU logo kind of on South Fifth like it was. No Dutch intersection or back-end angled parking. So the Dutch intersection, again, is that one at kind of Terry and First, when you come at that intersection. Install water spigot and irrigation and continue parklet experimentation. Midterm recommendations, add street lighting. Add string lighting, so overhead lighting. You've probably seen that in some other communities. Modify the city zoning regulations to create more opportunity for private investment. Connect First and Second Avenue for pedestrians north of Bent Street Bridge. And stormwater infiltration and tree wells and planter strips. And then, long-term recommendations is your street striping. Make the Lemonless Lane permanent. Expand housing choices. And this is one of those that could actually, depends on the investment in the warehouse district, but I could see this as that going into more of a midterm. If you get, if we get some upper housing there, that could take off quicker. Brand the warehouse district, enhance the park, and move forward with the Bent Street improvements. So then, the next steps are some direction from the council. We will probably do some business follow-up. Carl and I, when we did quite an outreach in terms of business owners and so forth that were along that corridor, and would like to follow up with them, probably give them a copy of the final report and see, you know, see how they feel and where they want to go. So everybody was really engaged in that respect. Staff law consideration of zoning overlay. And then the short-term outcomes already happening are the connection from First to Second Avenue north of Bent Street Bridge. There's currently an application that's been submitted through Public Works. And Parking Day, I don't know if you all remember that. That was actually like two weeks after our particular event. And that was really an effort that was spearheaded by Maggie Clark and Hannah. And it was like a four-hour period that was really, really kind of cool. And so, you know, and this was, and that was downtown. So it shows, you know, that type of thing can happen elsewhere in the city. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Do you have anything else to add?
Matt, you mentioned zoning perhaps re-changes to encourage investment. Are there specifics there?
There's a couple of things that we're considering. One of the things that we currently looked at was, it's owned industrial currently. When you really go down that corridor, there's really only probably five businesses that we would consider kind of industrial. Our comprehensive plan map actually has the areas, now I'm just talking about First Avenue, is mixed use. So, you know, we could look at just rezoning it to like an RCP, residential commercial professional. We have also looked at maybe an overlay district. But the overlay district would actually be, so you'd have the underlying zoning. And then the overlay district would reduce, you know, maybe off-street parking, allow greater heights and so forth. And some form-based type. But basically, you look on, say, a corridor or an area bounded by Putnam to Carter to South Fifth to First Avenue.
Two things to add to that really quickly. From Fourth Avenue down to First, basically the entire reach of the study area, we're actually crossing four different zones. Between Fourth and Fifth, your goodies on Almer's is residential commercial professional. Between Fourth and Second is residential high-density. And then between Second and the eastmost half of First is actually light industrial. And then the westmost side of First is industrial. So we're dealing with a lot of different zones along the entire reach here. And as Matt mentioned, the comprehensive plan calls for a large majority of the area is mixed use, which is consistent with our residential commercial professional zoning. Another thing, along the warehouse district especially, along First there, the parking requirements would be prohibitive of a large majority of the development that we currently have existing down there. For instance, if we did have housing in the future, the requirement for multifamily would be two spaces per unit on-site. So those are some of the things we are still looking at. How would some of these things be addressed through that if we were to do an overlay for the area? Overlay may be an option. Why we bring it up is it might be an avenue for us to find some continuity between these different zones that we're working through, along with the street scape, vegetation, parking, the type of mixed-use development we're considering.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Direction, do you'd like to see, or is this something we ought to visit about next weekend?
I just have a quick comment. I love some of the ideas that the photo and voice submissions had in there. Particularly the mural competitions and the light under the underpass and all that. I'd like to know how we can go about doing those things. Those look fun. Probably fun.
I'd definitely like to see more art, public art down there.
I think we have a community that really values that, too.
And ISU, I mean, the art department, obviously, but also the president was really supportive of that, too.
Oh, yeah.
And supporting ISU's involvement and investment in this area. So those are all really positive outcomes from this. I think it's a great job of what we could do. In terms of direction, one thing I'd be interested in hearing more about are these zoning possibilities. How can we encourage businesses, more housing, you know, and make it work with our codes and our zone?
Yeah. That would be reasonable, yeah.
Are there negative aspects of doing that?
Along First, there are still, is still industrial. So finding, you know, a way to manage the two together, the industrial uses that are currently there. So, you know, incentivizing some of the mixed-use development that we'd like to see there, while also not pushing any of the existing businesses out of the area. So it is a unique area, and we want to preserve our businesses that we have along the corridor as well. So I don't know if it's negative, it's a challenge, and it's something that we would be looking at.
As part of that, could we look at, it seems to me there's a lot of other cities of various sizes that have, you know, old warehouse districts that they've transformed. Can we look at examples and see how other cities have addressed those challenges and learn some best practices and things that work?
I really liked it. What I liked is, we gave it a try. It was nothing permanent. We tried it, we had a lot of very good feedback from the community. I think it'd be fun to kind of see what would happen in different parts of the city as well. I don't think we walk away from this Terry First project at all. I think that there are some things we could implement there. But it would be interesting to put more parklets and things over in, on Main Street and stuff to see how that worked and see if that was something feasible, you know. Anything we can calm traffic going through those areas. I know that the speed limit is 25, and I know most people seem to go 30 or 35, and it's pretty narrow anyway. And even when you're going 25, it seems like you're going 35. And so, it would be kind of interesting to see what that looks like. Maybe in the future, if we look at a project again like this, I think it'd be.
Only had one sort of negative, and that was like outside the Yellowstone, they had the little sitting area. There were people gazing at them, and I was fearful that there was going to be a traffic problem.
Yeah.
And that was really my only negative out of this whole project.
Yeah.
Is this worth trying a second version of some?
I think it is. I don't know if I would try it on Terry First, but maybe on Terry Street. But I think it's definitely worthy of trying somewhere. I would recommend in the downtown area, personally. I think it'd be fun to, be very interesting to see how the community responded to.
Make the traffic both directions downtown.
Well, that or narrow one street, one of them down to a one lane and see what happens.
Make it all walkable.
Make it all walkable. I mean, it'd be interesting to see what would happen if we do that. So I think that would be some direction that I would do, is kind of look at our community and see where we could try this, you know. Again, there's some, it's a lot of work for some people, but it's, I think it was, it's interesting to get it definitely. That area was definitely a happening place during this time of this walking, this project. And so I think it'd be interesting to see what we did in the future.
And it got a lot of people thinking about walkability, which is applicable to all the areas you're talking about. Whatever we do, include Giant Jenga.
Yeah.
It was a lot of fun.
That's because she got in the film. She's the only one that got her picture in the slideshow here.
Why did you give up on the back-end parking so easily?
You know, our observations was, like I said, it seemed just looking at it, people kind of got it. They would know to kind of back up. Of course, we had some signs there and so forth, but I think it's the corridor.
Just in that particular?
Yeah. Just in that particular, even with narrowing that road, people, they were still driving really fast up that corridor.
And one thing this picture shows really well, actually, are these two, in the larger picture, are the two northbound vehicles that pulled in. That's one thing we saw a lot. And so what would happen, when it was time for them to leave, they'd be backing out cross-traffic and.
But don't you think over time, people would learn to do that?
Well, when we were, the experience that we had here, though, and I think that Matt's right, the corridor was an issue there. With the experience we had here, after we were done with this project and people knew we were done, we weren't backing in anymore. We were parallel parking, we were parking backwards, we were parking forward. It was a mess over there. It was like demolition derby outfit going on over there, it seemed like. And so, in this particular corridor, it just didn't seem to work. It may, if we left it that way and we started enforcing that. But I think there's some other corridors that you might have that it would definitely work at.
They were used to doing that.
It's just, yeah, they were used to parking all these other ways.
Like adding a roundabout and everybody gets.
So I think it's, I think it's something that we could look at. And in fact, that would be one thing that I would encourage, is look in other parts of the city to see where maybe we could do some back-end parking and what happens.
The one thing I would mention is that we've talked a lot about our intention to help Pocatello ISU relationship. And I think that's a key neighborhood over there. It's one of the few where you could really develop a university district. You know, we've got university housing, but it's one of the few you could have a university district. It's ripe for that type of development over there.
Yeah. Yeah. And remember, one of the really key objectives of, and goals of this was to, you know, create that connection, to, you know, make it a safer corridor. You know, and I applaud, you know, the folks at ISU because they were really, you know, they were excited. I mean, the student groups were, had, you know, they really helped at some of the build-out with it. You know, President Saturday was there. And then, of course, we already mentioned the folks with the arts department. So, you know, that is, again, that relationship with ISU, the city, and just the community in general. And then, so I felt, I felt like, you know, it was a good thing. Another thing I'd like to mention, as far as just the meetings, like the first walk and talk meeting we had, that was one of the best-attended meetings I've been involved with. And there was about 79 people there.
Yeah.
And everybody was engaged. And they were, you know, you could just tell that there was some excitement there of like, yeah, let's do something in the corridor, wherever is doable. And then lastly, one of the things we'll work on with our engineering folks and street is to look at some different street designs in this section and how, what would really work there. I think we all agree, we kind of wanted pedestrian-oriented, wanted some bicycling, you know, bicycle lanes and so forth. But trying to take that corridor and you still have some, you know, warehousing and so forth down there. So we still have to take that into account as well.
Matt, if you want to get attendance at your meetings, try and move some homeless people into your neighborhood.
Definitely do that. Anyway, so.
It's going to cost us, and we're going to have to invest in this. We can plan all we want, but until we invest, and we've got to have a long view as to how we link the university with this area with Old Town. Because those are core areas in every way. And if we do not tie them together very closely by investing in them, it's not going to happen on its own. We've got to invest to make it happen.
So, give us some thought as you're moving forward. It sounds like there's some direction, a little bit of direction for you to work on and stuff. So we appreciate it. Thank you very much for the report and for doing the project. It was a good project.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yep. With that, thank you, council. We do have an executive session really quick. But with that, we are adjourned.